Yes, yeah, we will.
We're sorry for the delay. We're going to get started in about about one minute. Just give us another brief minute and we'll get underway. Thank you. Okay, everyone, thank you for being here. We will now move on to our next agenda item. I'm going to go ahead and again turn this over to our city manager Christina Turner. Good morning.
All right. Good morning. Welcome to day two of our goal-setting workshop. So the council this morning had DEI, Diversity Inclusive Equity Training, and that went well. And so what we want to do now is, what is today all about? So recapping day one, just a few moments on that. And then we're going to look at our ethics policy, and you can see it behind the council over here. And this is something pre-COVID days the council would physically sign. And so we're back to that instead of virtual signing. And then we're going to talk about our norms at the same time. And then we're going to review our strategic priorities. And so if we think back to day number one, January 27th, the council had an opportunity to talk about some council policies and procedures. The council reviewed policy 9701 that talks about meetings and different protocols. The council decided to move forward with some changes in the meeting time and the flow of the meeting and speaker timing. And so we're going to be bringing back to you at an open, regular council meeting the policy with the adjustments to that. The council talked about follow-up items and looked at Sustainable Morgan Hill and looked at the document that was established back in January of 2022 to determine whether or not this continues to be the strategic priorities for the city. And basically what we heard is yes, but let's make some tweaks to some of the language. And so we do in your packet have included a marked-for-changes version of Sustainable Morgan Hill as well as a clean version. And so we're going to go through each of our priorities today, five of them. We're going to spend most of the time on two of them this afternoon. And that's economic development as well as affordable housing and homelessness. And then we're going to touch on our other three, provide a brief update, communications, an update on transportation, and then also on fiscal sustainability. All right, so with that, we have up here the ethics policy document. And you'll see highlighted there are sort of the five areas. So we have honesty, respect, responsibility, fairness, and loyalty. And now at our council, at our council goal-setting in January, the council looked at these norms and decided, you know, let's add a couple things. There was a discussion about a lot of the different items, but the council wanted to add the concept the very top and be patient with one another. So that one now reads be respectful and patient with one another. And then a little further down, the concept of think about what is being said. So what's added is to the listen, so listen and think about what is being said. And I'm going to turn it over to the mayor because the mayor at the at the at the goal-setting said, hey, you know, can we summarize these norms, you know, in just five different areas? Can in five different concepts? And so thought it would be a good idea to bring back the ethics policy. And the mayor can talk about sort of the intersection between the two and his sort of thoughts on how the ethics policy fits in. And then once we wrap up this discussion, our city clerk and PIO will lead us in signing the ethics policy document. Mayor.
Thank you, Christina. No, excuse me. One of the, as Christina mentioned, we talked about, you know, there's so many of these norms that we were looking at. And at one point I said, hey, is there, is there, is there five? Is there a top five that we would want to consider? And then someone said, well, they're all in there. The five are in there for sure. But as we then went on later in the day with the training that we received from city attorney Larkin, and we got into the ethics policy, there were five things, there were five items that which we see right here that to me really indicated more about what should be our norms. These should be our norms. In fact, all of the, all of the norms that we have listed really fall under one of these five areas. And so Christina and I had a conversation about that. One of our team members, I think she's here, Hillary, ended up putting together these norms under each of these five different areas. And so it's just something to think about. I have printed versions. I just want to give to the council. Something we don't have to necessarily decide today, but I thought we could begin to at least think about it and then have a conversation further down the road about really sort of summarizing these, as Christina said, summarizing our norms under these five categories. So that that just becomes a little bit easier. I think it's an easier way to manage this when we are interacting and we have concerns about, you know, if we want to talk to a council member about something. It really falls under one of these five categories. So again, we're not, we're not necessarily getting rid of these, the multiple norms that we have listed. They just now fall under these five areas that I think really does summarize what we're looking for in, you know, what we expect of one another on the council. So with that, Christina, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
All right, so if everyone wants to take a moment just to see how the norms have been kind of categorized into the different parts of the ethics policy. And if the council wants to talk about any of the norms or the ethics policy, we can do that. And if not, what we'll do is I'll ask Michelle to lead us in signing the ethics policy. And so we're going to invite first the council up, and then we'll invite up the teammates that are here today.
Christina, I think what we're saying that while this is something we're going to talk about at a later time, that is not necessarily what we're signing. There's a description of what.
Absolutely, yeah. So what's up there is the City of Laurin Hill Ethics Policy. And so that's what council annually has signed. And then what we'll do is we'll have that up on the wall as we have in the past.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess I would just say, any council members want to speak to the ethics policy or to the norms or the document that the mayor passed out?
Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
I just wanted to go ahead.
Sure. And again, since it's a workshop, are you okay with addressing with first name? Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Yvonne, did you have a comment?
I was just asking for a minute to.
Oh, sure, sure. Please go right ahead. I think Renee, you've had some thoughts?
Yeah, I thought about this, this in preparation of today again. And I Googled it. It's not my invention, but what stuck with me, you know, this, this could be all simplified, right? Instead of having a long, I said, and there are, I came across of someone who said, those are the three rules. And then it starts with regard bad for yourself, whatever you regard bad for others. Second one, accept that you, accept that treatment from others which you would like others to accept from you. And the third one, do not say to others what you do not like to be said to you.
Right, yeah.
That summarizes everything in three sentences. And maybe something, something to keep in mind as we move forward. With regards to our own ethics policy, you know, ethics is about morals, right? It's not, not always subjective. And we all look at it slightly different at times. But how to enforce it, that's where it gets quickly difficult, right? You know, we can't remove each other, for example, right? Only voters can remove one of us. So how do we, how do we police ourselves, right? There's limitations, right? I think when you're a teammate and probably at some point HR rules kick in. But maybe you want to elaborate a little bit. But that is, that is a tough, tough discussion to have, right? How to enforce morals, right? And I, and I do understand when people say, well, that was not really ethical of you. Well, maybe that's your perspective, and I didn't realize that yet, right? So very difficult discussions around that topic. I don't have all the answers either yet, but I'd like us to think about it. You know, should we have stronger policies in place down the road?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
We're not going to have the answers today, really.
Right, exactly. Yep. No, thank you. I appreciate it. Marilyn, any thoughts? Nope?
Well, I agree with, I don't, I'm all. I agree with Renee. I think we need to identify how, if we feel another council member is not adhering to what we've all agreed to, what are our next steps? And that's something I think needs discussion at another time.
Yeah, and if I'm not mistaken, I think the council can take action to, to some degree censor, right? And remove from committee assignments and some other things. You're right, we can't remove a council member from their seat. But I think there are some actions that can be taken. And we can identify those and really maybe have a further discussion about that. But what I liked about what Renee said was the simplification of, again, in three sentences, there it is. We all get it and understand it. We don't have to go through a list of which one did you violate, you know? It's simplified and easier to to understand. Gino.
So I, I kind of like the way you broke things up, whoever did it. It just makes it just a little pointed and easier to look at. Do you, I don't know where it is. Do you have the section where it says in the ethics? If, if a council member violates an ethics, these are the items that could take place. Do you, do you remember that? Anybody?
So included in the packet is the council policy 0501, which is the ethics policy. And I think that that's probably what you're referring to.
Could you just bring that up real quick?
Michelle, can I ask you to do that? And so it is in our packet. And so it follows the ethics policy acknowledgement. So Michelle's going to pull up that policy. And, Gino, you're specifically asking about, can you elaborate which, so we know which section to go to?
Yeah, so it was the first item in that area. And I should have, I should have marked it in the packet. If you can't find it.
Yeah, it's probably page nine.
Is it, is it page nine?
It's about core values, and it talks about accountability. Could be page eight is where that might start.
Okay, while Michelle is doing that, in lieu of time.
Yeah.
So I'm going to, I'm going to, you know where it is? What page?
It's page 10 of the packet.
10 of the packet.
The section of the policy that talks about accountability, which I assume that's where you're focusing on.
Yeah.
It's the item 4B in, under accountability, violations of this policy.
Yeah, violations of this policy. I guess, I guess I have the wrong one. But I'm going to ask Ms. Hassan to elaborate or and or give an example of a violation. Oh, yeah, could you bring that up bigger?
I think it's next, it's page 10, two more pages from there. Right there. Yep.
Yeah, yeah. So, so could you give an example of a serious violation of ethics? And, and then what would be some of the procedures to account for that?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
Gino Siri cannot help you this morning. Unfortunately, it takes somebody like Cynthia.
A serious example of a violation would be accepting money for, for a vote or committing a violation of, say, the state law, which would be approving a contract in which you know that you have a vested financial interest. Those are the most easily apparent violations. And as we've discussed, the penalty is public approval, the censure by the council, removal from appointed offices. However, you cannot remove each other from your council seats because the voters have elected you. So only the voters could remove somebody from a seat for a violation of an ethics policy.
So would that be the same for not adhering to law?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to, there was actually a statement about the law and the, the spirit of the law. That was the sentence I was looking for. And I thought that was really something that we should just talk about. And I think, but I think you answered it, where it says the spirit of the law.
Correct. And it doesn't have to be necessarily a legal violation to be defined as a violation of the ethics policy. But those are the most clear-cut violations.
So it says the policy articulates values that are designed to ensure the public's confidence by requiring that. And then the first bullet says public officials, both elected and appointed, comply with both the letter and the spirit of the laws and policies affecting the operations of government.
Yeah, so if that doesn't happen, it's the, the accountability is what you just outlined, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if it does rise to the level of a serious legal violation, then there is the potential for being held accountable legally, you know, as a criminal prosecution, if somebody were actually to take funds. I think we've all seen that in the headlines in other jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Yvonne?
Yeah, I'm looking at this, the norms, and it says loyalty. Microphone. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the norms, and it says loyalty, but I don't see anything listed under there.
Yeah, so what the mayor passed out was just an exercise. Hmm, if we were to take the council norms, how would we bucket them with these five? And so each of you could do this exercise and bucket them differently. This is just one example. Yeah.
Got it. Okay, great. And then I saw the additions. Was anything taken off? I didn't see anything that was taken off.
Comparing the norms, yeah, though I believe they're all represented there. Yeah.
What we added there.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then as far as the ethics policy, we had a public comment talking about, you know, are we as council members were held to a certain standard? That our employees are held, are they being held to a certain standard? And I am assuming that the answer is yes. We're all signing this today. And as I was just reading through this, so I wanted to address that because I did get that comment, and I'm sure we all read that. I also wanted to.
And if I could just jump in on that?
Yeah, please.
Yes, absolutely. So the council, as well as all of the employees, are held to the ethics policy. And as a matter of fact, when teammates are hired, the ethics. the ethics policy is shared with all of the teammates. And of course, you know, ethics and integrity are of the utmost importance. We can teach people things, you know, skills and things on the job, but you can't teach someone integrity. And so that's very, very important to us.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were communicating that we're all on board with that. And then I wanted to just highlight under introduction where it talks even further about our responsibilities more over individual careers or reputations. The next sentence, "It's imperative to foster the highest standards of personal integrity and honesty in discharging public duties. Public officials should never compromise their honesty or integrity, any of us who are serving the city, for personal gain or advancement. They should be sensitive, remain sensitive to the values of the public that they serve." And I would say that that would include, you know, our personal gain, whether that be campaigning, whether that be professionally, whether that be, you know, any of the things that Ms. Hassan, Cynthia, reviewed. And so I just wanted to take a moment for us to reflect on that and point it out and let everybody know how important this is.
Yeah, thank you. And it was alluded to it already, but Dawn Larkin, our city attorney, gave ethics education and training at our goal setting. And so it's required by the council and the team every two years. And so we provide it here. It's also provided at conferences. And so I know that some of the council members took it elsewhere. But you're absolutely right. And so, you know, what is highlighted in that training is, you know, of utmost importance, you know, and that paragraph that you just read from.
I mean, I bring that up, I guess, just to give more context, you know, because it's important that we all want to have big wins, right? We all want to move forward. We all want to be successful in what we're doing. But we need to make sure that it's coming back to the values that we're representing in the community and that we're moving those forward. And that's just, you know, that's all I'm going to say about that.
Yvonne, is there, do you have anything in particular that you're concerned about? Or is it just sort of a general comment that you're making?
I guess I'm responding to what.
To the email?
Right, not just the email, but things that I've heard, you know, in council meetings. This is the time to address it, right? It's the elephant in the room. It's one of them. And so I'm just discussing that we all have that and share that responsibility.
We do, we do, and I agree. And I think it goes without being said, but it's important to say from time to time.
Right.
And just because someone makes an accusation doesn't make that accusation right or accurate.
That's right.
It's an assessment by that individual or individuals who make it. We have to hold one another accountable. And of course, Christina holds staff accountable. If we see something, we bring it to her attention. And likewise amongst ourselves, if we see something that I think is inappropriate or borders unethical behavior, that's what this is all about. That's why we want to be able to say, we agree to these norms or to this ethics policy. Because like the elephant in the room, we need to be able to say, hey, there's something here concerning me and I want to have a conversation. And I think we need to be able to say to one another, we're willing to have those uncomfortable conversations, preferably in private first, and then address whatever those concerns are. But again, I go back to, you know, people can make accusations all day long. Doesn't make them true. And if they, you know, so I just want to make sure that we're kind of on the same page here. I'm not quite sure where you're going.
Let me be clear. You know, there have been things that have been said. We got a public comment that said, you know, there are things that aren't correct or haven't been said correct. I can tell you whether or not people agree with them. You know, there are some people who put an incredible amount of time and research in doing this. And so I think that we should talk about that and say, maybe that has happened. If that has happened, then let's take accountability of where that has happened. Let's correct what maybe was left unsaid or uncorrected so that we're holding up to the standards that we say. Not, you know, not just us here signing here, but to our community. That is who put each and every one of us here. So at the end of the day, you know, whether or not it's an accusation that we agree with, I think we need to address it. And I think this is one of the ways that we do that is by making this, I'm really glad to see that this is now that it's in person, we're able to do that, we're able to sign it. And I think it just warrants a little bit of conversation to say, hey, I know I've heard things on the dais that aren't correct and I would like for them to be corrected so that we're all kind of working from the same information, right? Because if you have something that's said, and let's be honest, there's a lot of discussion that happens. You cannot correct every single thing, right? Sometimes you've got discussion that goes on for hours. So it's impossible to do. But when it is possible to do, all I'm saying is that we commit to doing that.
And I think we are committed to that. I think what's important is that if we don't know it, we can't address it.
Right.
And while someone may bring it to our attention, the question then becomes, was it unethical behavior or not? And then once we determine that it is or has been, then it can be addressed more appropriately.
Or even more innocently, once we're aware of it, we just address it. I mean, there may have been absolutely no analysis, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's my point, yep, yep. I think we're on the same page. It's maybe coming out a little bit differently, yeah.
Okay.
Gino?
Thank you, Mayor. But we do have to give the city manager the ability to look in and investigate any comment of unethical behavior first. So we have to give our staff that time to do. And I have confidence that our city manager will bring it to our attention if that's, if there's any purported improprieties. So I just wanted to make that point also. We have to give our city manager and her staff time to review it and make that analysis and then bring it to us.
Sure, I think that's important, yep, absolutely. Can't wait to sign this document, my goodness.
Well, if I can add one more thought. You know, it says the City of Morgan Hill's ethics policy, but it doesn't really include our staff. It says how we are to treat staff, how we work with staff, but it doesn't go the other way around. And the part that really is missing, and I've mentioned, I think in previous years, how to enforce a violation, right? Who determines? Again, we're talking to some degree also about moral values, right? Not violations, illegal violations, right? And so that's a gray zone, I'm looking at. Cynthia, to determine which one is which. But that's where the discussion become very difficult very quickly, right? Because your morals and mine might not always be the same, right? Hopefully, they are very close, but they're not always the same. Someone, you might think, well, you violated this. And I said, no, this is what I think.
That's a good point, yeah. I think, though, with regards to the staff, the staff reviews these ethics, the ethics policy. They also do sign an employment agreement indicating they're aware of these ethics policies, right?
So there's an acknowledgement of the policy, correct? Michael?
They sign it upon.
Teammates sign it, an acknowledgement of the policy. Upon being hired, yeah.
Yeah, so they're aware of it.
They sign it every year.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the team that's here is going to sign this and then we'll circulate it to the rest of the team.
Sure, but Renee, did that kind of answer your question about?
No, it does not. It says City of Morgan Hill ethics policy, but it doesn't include staff. It includes public officials and commissioners.
Okay, I see what you're saying, okay. So the act of signing it publicly, like we're going to do, you're okay with that, but are you questioning whether or not then?
To add staff, what are you?
No, I, yeah, that's something we should discuss. Should we have, you know, at the very beginning, we say public officials, both elected and appointed, and staff. Why not adding staff?
Okay, adding the verbiage.
So the bullet that we were looking at earlier says public officials, both elected and appointed. So, I mean, it addresses both.
I think what Renee's talking about, though, was employees of the staff.
Yeah, were appointed, right? So it, let me go back to it. So it shows, it references officials and it defines officials as both appointed, which staff is, versus elected, which is all of you. So, right there, that first bullet.
After six years, I learned something. I thought you're higher, you're appointed, but are our employees?
All employees are considered.
Oh, employees are considered to be appointed.
Got it.
Yeah, it's not just Dawn and myself.
Oh, I see.
Thank you, I appreciate the call.
So Michael's my appointee, Hillary is my appointee and so forth.
By the way, I wanted to publicly thank Hillary for putting this document together for us. Thank you for your work on that. And we'll come back and have a conversation. So, like that.
Yeah, and if I, can I just go ahead and read what's actually on here? Okay, so City of Morgan Hill ethics policy. City of Morgan Hill's ethic policy requires that. We start off with the same bullet. "Public officials, both elected and appointed, comply with both the letter and the spirit of the laws and policies affecting the operations of government. Public officials be independent and impartial and fair in judgment and actions. Public office be used for the public good, not for personal gain. Public deliberations and processes be conducted openly unless legally required to be confidential in an atmosphere of respect and civility. And public officials encourage a diversity of opinions to be expressed during public debate and discussion." And then there's the five that we've been talking about. Honesty, respect, responsibility, fairness and loyalty. And then I statements associated with each of those. If there's nothing further, I think, Mayor, if you could come up first and be the first to sign this. Michelle has for you a pen. And then we'll have the council and then our teammates come up. Yeah, and as we're going through our signing party right now, Human Resources Director Michael Horta, I just wanted to provide a little bit more information. So this ethics policy up here incorporates both appointed and elected. The policy that you have before you is the council adopted policy. And we have a policy administratively that mirrors the policy that is CPO 501. Thank you, Michael. And that's the policy that staff would sign upon being employed. And so, Mr. Mayor, once the council has signed, we'll just allow the teammates to come up as we move forward. Does that sound like a plan?
Perfect, yeah, thank you.
Teammates? Then the commissioners will sign in with the council and then all our teammates sign. So we take it to each facility and have all of our teammates sign.
Welcome. Mayor, while we're doing this, I just want to welcome and thank Hillary for being back. I knew there was something missing for a while and now we know what it is. Her special spice, so we're happy to see you.
If you see me smiling more, it's for that very reason.
I'm sure it is.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for signing the document.
All right, so we're going to move on to our next section. And so before we jump into the discussion about strategic, let me see, there we go. Before we, yes? Thank you so much.
Yes, you're right. Okay, so, Michelle, do we have anyone who would like to make comments?
Everybody's racing up here.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Mayor, council members and staff. For the record, my name is Doug Mierhead of the City of Morgan Hill. Sending in my email box is a letter that I wrote back in 2018 to the paper, which I chose not to publish, titled "Transparency Does Not Ensure Accountability." And I've been listening to some comments here today about accountability. So I'm going to give you a little story. It's old history. Some of the players are still around, others have departed. But to me, it is an example of how the council, the city manager and the city attorney all failed us in this issue. And I keep it there because every year you have this signing ceremony and I, you know, it's nice that you have it, but if you don't enforce it, why bother? So you had a, you hired a consultant to work with you on salary adjustments. And it was a written contract. It was approved by the city council. I noticed later on you had a consent agenda item where the dollar value was increased. And I couldn't understand why. So I brought that to the council. And the key fact to me was you had a dollar limit and the city spent more money than that. It continued to accept billing. The city attorney said, well, we never should have put that language in the contract in the first place. And we certainly can't afford to just drop this consultant in the middle of the salary negotiations. The only comment I could get from city council, one member said, well, perhaps you will do better next time. And the city attorney responded, perhaps we will. Now, I have problems with that. And I would just like you to think of that as one example as you go forward with perhaps, what does accountability actually mean? You know, what does the spirit of this policy mean when someone does something like this? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doc.
Good morning, everyone. Let me first say that I hope it's obvious that because somebody makes an accusation does not make it true. Ethics is a top priority for the City of Morgan Hill. So says the ethics policy that you all just signed. Okay, I believe that. But when staff members lied to the planning commission, when they lied to the city council, when they lied to the public, and those lies are material and have the effect of denying the residents of Morgan Hill any notion of fairness in the decision-making process, ethics is not the top priority. In my written public comments I submitted for today's meeting, I called what happened throughout the Redwood approval process, "The Big Lie." That's a fair characterization. Falsely claiming that a 510,000-square-foot, 70-dock door facility was included in the 2035 General Plan Environmental Review. Confidence in our local government will not come from this piece of paper or from your signatures, no matter who signs it. When lies are used to advantage a point of view and a desired outcome in total disregard of any notion of an independent and impartial decision-making process, it should be clear to everyone that other things have much higher priority than ethics in Morgan Hill government. It's easy to talk about ethics twice a year. It's even easier to look the other way. There's a lot going on and a lot of excuses can be made. But the reason organizations have ethic policies and the reasons those policies define accountability is because people aren't perfect. Mistakes in judgment do happen. And you know, people who are nice all the time, people that we really like and people who work really hard, yeah, they can make errors in judgment too. And when our local government talks about ethics but allows big lies to completely distort the decision-making process in disregard of public interest and does nothing about it, no number of coffees with the mayor, no amount of marketing Morgan Hill together will hide the fact that ethics is far from the highest priority in our government. You can change where meetings start, how long each of you have to talk and every other city council norm you want. But if you want more than five or six. But if you want more than five or six residents to participate in a democratic process, maybe you should think about what should be done to ensure that our community has a reason to believe that if they participate, they will have a fair shot at having their voice heard in an independent, impartial, fair decision process, instead of a process where big lies influence outcomes and there is no accountability whatsoever. The ethics policy got it right. The citizens, businesses, and employees of Morgan Hill are entitled to a fair and ethical government. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think Nick has his hand up.
Thank you. This doesn't have to do with ethics. This is a message from John McKay, who couldn't be here, so he asked me to read this.
John, before you started, I'm sorry, Brian.
Yes, my name's Brian Sol.
Yes, exactly, of course, of course, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You had mentioned that, are you also taking your wife's time?
Yes, if need be. I hopefully, it shouldn't go over three minutes, hopefully.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that at the start.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Turner, council members. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on state housing legislation. Besides being on the Morgan Hill City Council, I served on numerous committees and task forces for CalCities, also known as the League of California Cities. One of the most important committees was my three years on the Housing, Economic, and Community Development Policy Committee. This committee was made up of elected officials and city staff and delved deeply into the state legislation regarding housing. We all wanted to fight to keep our local control and recover what had been lost or eroded, but as a statewide committee, there was no unanimous consensus on how to go about it. Most meetings were focused on fighting our legislators and their seemingly insensitive demands that cities build housing and not give cities the support they would desperately need while doing so. There were many meetings with legislators under staff in Sacramento. Most of us learned, or simply felt, that most legislators looked at us as the enemy, which did not understand the greater need for housing, which we fought with appearance of being nimbys. I truly felt that they did not realize some of us could provide housing and maintain our community's character while saving our city's budgets. Much of the housing legislation was authored in a huge rush, and many of the flaws in their bills and the lack of state-level support of their own initiatives is shining through now and in the years we've had to watch and experience their impacts. I believe I have spent at least three times the amount of time with this one policy committee than any other person in Morgan Hill, and developed a strong opinion that it is futile to try to stop upcoming housing legislation. Here's what I believe the Morgan Hill City Council and staff should pursue. Number one, stay on top of upcoming legislation through CalCities and support the refinement of bills as they move through the legislative committees. Try to provide reasonable ideas to make the bills better. Again, you're not going to stop them. I believe the sooner you embrace that, the sooner you can start to make effective changes. As a small community, we are simply outnumbered by those in the big cities that support or don't care about the direction the state is heading. Number two, urge our legislators to review parts of past bills to prompt revisions, revise them to favor more local control. Right now, the bills that take broad brush approach because of the speed of their development and the lack of the ability for the state departments to support their own desires. We are not the same as Los Angeles or San Francisco. I believe our community would benefit from advocating for more tiers of treatment within those bills, leading to more flexibility for us. Proposed changes our legislators can take to their peers and help existing bills evolve into something more livable. Number three, push our legislators to fully staff their own housing development departments. There is a great sense of urgency, but the policymakers, I'm sorry, there is a great sense of urgency by the policymakers, but the state's own bureaucratic agency is inadequate and understaffed. That is one reason why Morgan Hill did not get the exception to SB 330 that was supported by everyone but the governor and the state's administrative staff, so it was killed. Number four, fight with CalCities to again focus on unfunded mandates and payments already due to the cities for past commitments. There is huge support within the organization to do so. I feel that much of the cry to demand the stop to infallible housing legislation can be nothing more than giving the appearance of doing something instead of the hard work of actually affecting the needed changes. In closing, I am sharing my experience and hope it is thoughtfully considered as is some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, John McKay. You were channeling John so well, that's why I called you John earlier. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Nick Gashian, I'm representing the Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to pause and reflect a little bit back on the city norms. First, I am encouraged to hear that the team here will be doing some further study and work on city norms. I think as discussed at the first workshop meeting, these are wonderful as far as the way they're written today, but there's just well too many, and I think many of them probably really fall more in the category of protocols or procedures. But I would ask you to, one, consider the urgency to really finalize your, what I would call principles of commitment, we're calling here the term "city norms," sooner than later. And I ask you to think about three things. How are we going to demonstrate those commitments? How are we going to communicate those commitments? Then how to reinforce those commitments every time we meet, whether it's in City Hall or other meetings? I do want to offer maybe just an example. These things are truly near and dear to me, and the ethics policy is just a cascading effect into your city norms. That should be structured, it should be disciplined, but it should be realistic. From our perspective, the norms that you're going to be taking a look at really should be narrowed down to what I would consider the vital few, whether it's six to eight. What we have in front of us are wonderfully drafted, but there's just well too many of them. And I would make sure that we have a declarative statement that really demonstrates those actions as it relates to that. So let me just read one of the guiding principles that I took the Chamber of Commerce leadership team through. I've been through many of these sessions, both as a participant and as a facilitator, but I wanted to give you some encouragement that we can actually demonstrate the commitments that you're going to be holding yourselves accountable for. The first one I want to talk about is integrity. And here's a statement that we make at the Chamber of Commerce. Having integrity means that a person is self-aware, accountable, responsible, truthful, and that their actions are consistent with their words. The Morgan Hill Chamber of Commerce Leadership Team members commit to work with integrity. These are statements that actually can resonate not only here in this room, but could also resonate with the greater community. I'd ask you to really think hard about distilling this down to the vital few. I'd ask you to take a look at the characteristics that demonstrate that pledge, and I ask you to now to figure out how to communicate that every time that we have a session here. It should be fully displayed on the board next to your wonderful pictures, so anyone that walks in as a community member understands, not only our elected officials, but the commitments, the principles our elected officials are working towards, the greater good of our community. So I offer this as an example, I offer this as an opportunity to continue this conversation, but I would encourage you to distill this down to the vital few sooner than later, so it's incorporated into your fabric of every interaction, every discussion that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Nick, real quick, though, you mentioned three things. One, how to demonstrate, could you run through that list of three?
No, I mean, I'm thinking it's important beyond just having a statement, let me just read one of the statements. Address issues, not person, be honest and real. So what I'm suggesting here is how are you going to demonstrate that action, right? So that's the example. Having integrity means that a person is self-aware, accountable, responsible, and truthful, and their actions are consistent with their words.
Yes, what I was asking for is you identified, you said how to demonstrate that action, and there were two other comments like that.
How to communicate, you know, what these principles really mean, not only internally here, but to the greater community. And then how do you continue to reinforce those?
Real quick, I'm trying to write these down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
How are we going to communicate that? Or how do we disseminate the information? And then through your actions, how do you reinforce those behaviors every time that we have a session?
Perfect. Thank you, Nick. Anyone else? Does John want to say anything else again? No. Okay, very good. Christina.
Okay, so our next section is on legislative advocacy, and so you're included in the agenda packet for today. We have briefings on several items, and so this is one of them. And so I just want to cover a couple highlights, and the topic of legislative advocacy will probably come up in the other sections that we're going to have today. And so what is our work plan? So one is to continue to engage with the League of California Cities. The League of California Cities has different arms to it, including education, and then a big component of it is advocacy, really being the voice of cities. As many cities our size don't have the sort of funding to have lobbyists that we pay and that just are doing work on our behalf. And so, continue to engage with the League of California Cities. They study bills that impact cities and really bring to our attention bills that we may need to look at, and potentially then advocate with our legislators through the form of phone calls, through the form of letters that might be in opposition, might be in support. The letter might be to oppose a given legislative bill unless it's amended. The next item is to enhance awareness with our regional, state, and federal legislative bodies. And then to host a local effort to engage our legislative offices. And so this is something that, now that we have our newly-elected at the regional and state level, getting them here and getting them to understand our priorities here in Morgan Hill. And then lastly, to continue to advocate for transportation funding and local control to limit the impact of state-mandated housing legislation. So those are the two, the primary areas that our legislative actions are focused on, so housing and then transportation. All right, so next we are going to move on to our next strategic priority, and so I'm going to be turning it over to Michelle, and our first one.
Hey, Christina.
Yeah.
Before we move forward, you know, this is so important to me and probably most of us on this council, and I think John, in his letter, made a good point that I agree with. Where I don't always have insight is when a new bill is in the works, because there are hundreds, thousands of bills. I think there's over 2,000 bills floating around as we speak, right? So how do I know of those 2,000, which are the one, two, three that will impact our city the most, where we could step in and then say, hey, you know, for example, if we meet the RENA numbers, can you add those cities that are doing the right thing, you're exempt from this bill or something? Whatever would be appropriate to ask them to consider in a bill. Usually, we hear about it after the fact, and we get an update, all those bills got approved, and this is what it means for our city, but at least on our level, not before. And I don't have the bandwidth to look at 2,000 bills to understand which one is, which one I need to step in for Morgan Hill.
If I could, real quick, Renee, I think, and I'll turn it back over to Christina, but I do think, and you're right, we've got to be aware of those bills before they're passed by the state assembly so that we can take some action on them. And I think that's really where we are looking to, and it's funny that John McKay's letter here, there are already several of these things. You recall, a couple of council meetings ago, we were sort of having this discussion on the council about the things, with our frustration regarding these housing bills coming forward, what is it that we could do? And we actually kind of developed, and so out of that, I did put all this together, some things that I think we could do as a council, a few of them similar to what John has mentioned here in his letter to us. But I think we really do have to rely very heavily on the Cities Association, and I think, Renee, sorry, I'm getting everybody's name wrong today. Yvonne, who sits on that, really, we're going to be looking to you as that individual to help keep us informed of those bills that are coming forward so that we can take more formal action. And I've even had some discussions now with some staff members about how do we, again, as we have all, I think, talked about, we've got to have a discussion with our elected officials at the state level. What does that look like? What does the messaging really look like, especially around carve-outs? If we've met our RENA numbers and we have done very well in order to either get closer to meet them, then, yeah, how can we get some relief as a community or some carve-outs? And so that's where we have to kind of develop that message and then go and bring others with us. So I think there are those things that you're talking about that I think we need to formalize. Again, we have to kind of do it in a public setting in order to kind of develop what that game plan looks like, but I do think it's much of what John has said here in his letter, plus what we're talking about here as far as becoming more aware of the legislation as that legislation is being written and talked about. So, and I think, Christina, you may have some other comments on that.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add to that. So recently, Jennifer brought forward, you know, all the housing bills, and many of them had already been approved and some of them hadn't yet. And then typically, what ends up happening is we will bring to council's attention when bills get to the point where we really should be advocating one way or the other, and so we have a policy that allows for myself, for the mayor, to send in a letter as long as our position is consistent with council's priorities, if there's timing involved, so that we can't wait until an actual council meeting. And then we bring that letter forward for council to see it and to sort of ratify the position that we have taken. And so that's one way in which we bring it forward to the council. All right.
Thank you.
Any other?
Can I help, Renee? Is that?
Yes and no. Yes, so Yvonne might hear about some of them, but I'm sure they're not going to work through 2,000 bills, right? That's where I'm coming from.
No, but there aren't 2,000 bills related to housing. What we're looking for...
Many.
There are many, there are many. I agree. But what we really are going to be relying on, again, and I think we can all be somewhat connected to the Cities Association as well.
It doesn't even have to be for housing only, there's other bills, right?
True, that's true.
That impact our PD and other organizations. The Solar App is one that I just discussed with our city manager the other day, and I'm trying to do my homework, it's just so overwhelming because they are so...
Numerous.
They are handling so many, I tried to be nice here. They're processing so many bills, right? It's insane, just over 2,000 bills in one session, legislation.
You can't track them all, yeah.
I don't even know how they handle themselves.
Right.
So how do they know the impacts they're having on our communities?
Right.
I don't think they all think it through, it's pretty clear to me. So where does our staff, and I'm sure you have the same challenge, where do you step in and figure out this one has the impact?
Yeah, so that's what I was going to say. In addition to the Cities Association, in addition to the League and our policy committees, our leadership team in each of their respective disciplines follows the legislation, so they belong to professional organizations that are watching and studying these bills, and ones that are significant enough for us to bring forward, we do that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I think you had a question first? No? Yvonne?
Thanks. Yeah, this is, I just wanted to say, you know, with what's going on with the League, I mean, there are so many bills, but they do, we do go through with the housing bills, they have lobbyists that they will go through, all the different bills. Our last meeting was really just kind of taking this broad swipe over what is it that, you know, the cities are going to be concerned about with the housing. We're going to be having another meeting, well, I'll actually be meeting with the chair, and then we'll have a meeting after that. I'm the vice chair on the HCAD committee, and we'll be talking about what are the bills that we really want to be looking out for housing and for community development. So I think in this next, I mean, the last phase, we were still getting, they had just been, you know, submitted, things are dropping out of committee, what's going to go forward, what's not, but now I think they have a good idea of what is going to go forward and what might actually grow legs. And so we can, you know, we'll definitely have more information next week on where that's going to go. So, and then just bringing them back, and when we're working with the League of Cities, you've got a whole host of different-sized cities, which I think is really helpful because we've got other cities like us that are also interested in trying to figure out how are these local mandates going to impact them. Within that, I think there's another caveat to look at, which is where we're at with RENA, where we are at with RENA. And we also want to be very, I would think, hopeful, but strategic with our city and where we are in getting our approval and what our staff has done and worked so hard to get us approved at, and make sure that that all gets done before, you know, before we know where we're going, so.
Right, very good. Thank you, Yvonne. Gina?
Mr. Mayor, quick, thank you, Mayor. So CalCities puts together often a hot bill list, so perhaps we can get that distributed to us, so, for example, so Renee knows, and I know, you know, what these bills are in addition to the assigned person for CalCities. So I just wanted to mention that.
And that's, I'm assuming on their website, is that correct? And that's, I'm assuming on their website, is that correct?
Yes. That'll come out after we go through this next, they'll post everything, and I'll make sure you guys all get that.
Excellent. Thank you, Yvonne. Thank you, Gino. Christina?
Great, okay. So, okay, so now, what we're going to do is we're going to move into three of our strategic parties. These are meant to just be really brief updates. And then, as I mentioned, after lunch, we'll dive into economic development and housing. And so, with Adam, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle to talk about communications.
Thank you, Christina, Mayor, Council, teammates, members of the community. So, as you all know, we have a communications outreach and engagement plan that we adopted last year in 2022, and it is obviously one of our strategic priorities. And our community has spoken about the importance of that, and I think we know that and are continually working to see how we can do things differently and better and see where there are gaps so that we can close those gaps. Our plan for right now is we're implementing that work plan. And so, we're going through, that plan has five priorities in it with detailed strategies and tactics for each of those priorities. And so, we're implementing that plan and figuring out how we tell Morgan Hill's story, which is housing, which is transportation, which is all the things that, you know, we're talking about here today. And then we're also executing our Morgan Hill Together campaign. And that campaign is really about strengthening our relationship with the community and building a sense of community and then continuing to build trust. And so, we're working on a variety of different things that go with that, but making sure that we're being really thoughtful and genuine as we move through that. So, where we're at right now, we hired two full-time English-Spanish bilingual, biliterate teammates for our communications. We've revamped the weekly 401 and monthly event calendars to make them more easily digestible and to make sure that we're not only sharing our information, but information that's important to the community. We created a monthly event calendar on our website because the community told us that was very important to them. We've developed a citywide social media playbook that we're reviewing right now, and that will be shared with our whole city team so that they can be effectively posting on social media. We have adopted an administrative social media policy, again, going to making sure that we're using the tool accurately and correctly. We have received blue check verifications for our Facebook and Instagram. This lends credibility to those. It says that this is in fact the City of Morgan Hill. There are people out there who do create fake pages and do share information that may not be accurate. And so, this is, it may seem not a big deal, but it's actually pretty impressive, so thank you, Amanda, for that. And we've worked with divisions throughout the city since bringing Amanda on to really work with them on their engagement strategies, their community outreach strategies, marketing. We've worked with finance, utility billing, economic development, and more, and adding capacity to that. Where we're going, we're going into our website update and refresh, and we're going to look at that with a lens of accessibility and ease of use. And so, we do this every few years. And my goal for this project is to really make sure that the way the information on the website is organized makes sense to the end user. Right now, it very much matches how we internally do things, which makes a lot of sense to us. But somebody else comes on the website and they might be looking for housing or a specific housing bill or maybe something on transportation, and we have it in a way that makes a lot of sense to us, but it may not be so easy for them to find. And so, we're really making sure we go through each and every division and page to make sure that the information makes sense to the end user and that they can find it easily. And then, we're also looking for opportunities to create native Spanish pages. So, our website does have Google Translate feature. Google Translate is getting better. It's still not perfect, but it is a great tool. And we're looking at where does it make sense to have Spanish pages that are specifically in Spanish so that folks who are looking for information don't have to go to that page or try to find it in English or use Google Translate and hope that it did a good job? And where is the bang for that buck, right? Because we have limited resources, and unfortunately, translating and interpreting is incredibly time-consuming, and it can be very expensive when you're paying people. So, we want to make sure that as we're doing this, we're doing it where it makes sense. And so, through all of this, we'll be talking with the community and the end users to really hear from them and figure out what makes sense for them. And we're also developing a language access policy, and what this is going to do is it's going to document what we currently do. What are we doing right now to put information out in other languages? What are the opportunities we have to provide interpretation services? So, we know what we're doing and then evaluate where we can be going, because I think there are some opportunities for us to do more with the current resources we have. That being said, truly doing language engagement in a way that is authentic and useful is a big, big lift. You can't just create a rec guide in Spanish and put it out if you don't have employees that can answer the phone and talk to somebody in Spanish or have instructors that are there to talk to a mom when her kid is in a swim lesson. And so, for me, it's really important that we think through that. And we talk with the council about your goals, and it may be that you really want a rec guide in Spanish even if there aren't resources to do it all the way, but we need to think about how the end user feels about that, how that impacts them. So, those are the conversations we're having, not only internally, but with the community. We're also exploring opportunities to engage and connect through multicultural events. So, we kind of did this with National Night Out, was our kind of getting our toes in there and trying to bring in some different cultural aspects, because Morgan Hill is made up of this beautiful melting pot of all kinds of different people with different backgrounds, different cultural backgrounds, different experiences, and we want to honor that and recognize that. And that's one of our initiatives with Morgan Hill Together is to create a space where we just honor and respect the community and show them that we're here for them and not ask anything of them. And as we talk about communication and engagement, like, I think of it, there's this analogy of a bank account, right? We keep making deposits into the community so that when we have a survey or we need their help with something, it's a two-way street. We're not just always asking for them to give us information or to help us out. And then lastly, kind of developing that Meet Morgan Hill campaign that we've talked about, it's a part of our communications and outreach and engagement plan. And what that looks like is, this is Morgan Hill, these are the teammates, this is what we do, and to really kind of put faces to names, make us more reachable, and help the community better understand what we do and what we don't do, right? We hear from the community, why isn't the city widening 101? Well, that's not our jurisdiction. That's not to say we aren't working on it, but that's not something that we have direct control over. And so, part of this is to help educate the community so they really understand what we do and who does what so they can go to the right person and so we can help them with that. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. Do you have any questions?
Great presentation. Thank you. Any questions? Yvonne was first, please go right ahead.
Comments, is that okay?
Please, go right ahead.
So, first of all, thank you. I love what you're sharing here, and you've really doubled down on it, so I really appreciate that, Michelle. I like the approach that you're taking as far as saying that you want to, you know, honor the community, you're kind of going to try and meet them where they're at. You're looking at that we're a multicultural and diverse area and trying to bring something for kind of every group, if you can, however you can, to, we want to bring people out, right? We want to hear what they're thinking, what we need, what we're doing good and where we can improve. And I just think you've done a lot with the whole social media, and I'm wondering, you know, what, I noticed that we have kind of split off some pages. So, we used to be Engage Morgan Hill, and now it's changed to kind of Economic Development. There's, you know, PD, there's, I just, Environmental, I think. So, I'm trying to find out, is that the look that you think we're going towards? Does that drive more interaction when we have them split out in that way? Have we measured how that's working versus having kind of a one point where everybody's going?
So, we've actually had all of those pages for quite a while. So, when Amanda came in, she did a social media audit, and we have upwards of 27 or 30 citywide social media channels between Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, YouTube, Next Door. The only one we've added recently is housing, and there is arguments both ways. So, we recently changed Morgan Hill Engage to the City of Morgan Hill as a part of the verification process. So, it's still the same page. We've had PD, has had multiple channels, and there is specific reasons to that. For example, PD is very specific in what they post on their PD pages so that it is police and public safety related. And that's important when they're getting messaging out to those people who need it, that they're not getting the clutter of, and here's, the Historical Society is having an event today, right? Which is also important, but if PD is trying to get a message out, they want people to go to their channels and get that message. When we started the housing page, the conversation was, we want to share resources to people that are looking for it, and we want to make sure they're really easy for them to find. And so, we've created a housing page where we're now sharing housing information about, these are opportunities, like, and so, different cities do it differently. We are looking at opportunities to consolidate, if that makes sense, and looking at the analytics of those different social media channels to see, you know, should we consolidate? Should we not? Why and when? And then additionally, it is the experts in those fields that are running those. So, we run the city pages, but the housing team is posting on housing. We support them in that. The police department posts on the police page, you know. And so, it is those people who are the direct contacts and the direct experts posting there.
Okay. And so, there hasn't been, but there probably will be a look at these 25 or something pages to make sure, you know, if we have pages that are doing some other things, that we can condense that where we, so we can be more strategic. And then, is there some type of a messaging across all disciplines and all departments so that when a message is going out, it's the same style, it's the same feel from the city, right?
That's what's in our social media playbook, so we have developed it, we're reviewing it, we're running it by the team, and that's what it's intended to do, is give us some consistency both in language and when and how we post and what we post so that we can keep that feel of Morgan Hill and make sure that we're being consistent.
Okay. And if there are comments or interaction on these pages, do we interact with that or is that, how is that handled?
Yeah, so, people can both comment and they can direct message. Some pages are different than others. Like, for example, when you go to City of Morgan Hill and you send a comment or if you send a message, you instantly get a message back that says, "Thank you for messaging us." We will respond to you within 48 hours, something to that effect, because we aren't actively monitoring it over the weekend. And so, as a part of a social media playbook, we're going to make sure that all of our social media channels have something like that and are clear that if you receive a comment and it's a question, you should respond to it. And even if it's a, "Hey, thank you for sharing this," it's a great idea to say, "You're so welcome."
Right.
And because that's an opportunity to engage, right? And people want that engagement. If they're taking the time to comment, then we should take the time to acknowledge and thank them. And so, all of that is tied into our social media playbook so that we can sure we're being consistent across all of those channels.
In order to try to keep on track...
Sorry, yes. One more, just one more point. So, when we talk about community outrage, one thing that I would like to see, you know, I go to multiple, we all go to multiple mixers and mixers. I'd love to see us do a city mixer, staff, you know, our leadership, council members, just to make sure there's no agenda, come, meet the city representatives, and people are free to talk or discuss whatever it is that they would like to discuss, and they can meet people as people rather than officially in your role.
So, we have taught, very long time ago, we did an open house in the High Runway with the CCC where we had teammates come do displays for their different departments, and they were there, and that's something we're figuring out how we do that again, whether we tie it in with the state of the city so that, you know, because we do that also for Local Government Day, we put together an open house for them, and that class gets to kind of meet with the team. And so, it is something that's definitely on our radar, and we're figuring out how we do that in a way that's inviting and makes sense.
Even National Night Out might be an opportunity there. So, with that, we're going to, Gino's got a couple of comments?
No, I'm going to suspend them for the sake of time. I appreciate it.
Sure, okay. Very good.
And you can feel free to email me comments and comment, Christina, if you have other thoughts or ideas.
Very good. Thank you, Michelle. Christina?
Okay, so, our next topic is our next strategic priority, which is transportation. And so, included in your packet was a transportation briefing. And I have Edith, our Assistant City Manager for Development Services, that's going to run us through some of the highlights. Edith?
Thank you. I want to introduce myself as Chris Gioni, Public Services Director, for the next five minutes. On his behalf, I'll be presenting the transportation briefing. So, recognizing that we're short of time, I'm going to go very quickly. This is just a reminder for us in the community, our goals on transportation. Again, being cognizant that we are in South County, we need to think about it from a regional perspective in how do we solve transportation issues with our partners to the South. So, our goals continue to be to work with the City of Gilroy to advocate for funding for the improvements and betterments that happen to be in this part of the region that we call the Santa Clara County Transportation Corridor. We continue to advocate for regional transportation planning issues. And then the last, the next two bullet points are to focus on safety. For us in the City of Morgan Hill, we prioritize funding for Vision Zero and the related safety strategies over congestion management. And finally, on that end, is to continue to look at our policies and programs, creating a culture that prioritizes safety, creating livable streets and seeking to eliminate traffic fatalities. And that is the goal of our Vision Zero program. The next slide is in transportation advocacy, looking at the big-ticket items that are going to help improve congestion management and transportation mobility in our community is the expansion of Highway 101. Working with CalTrain to expand service in South County, that means bringing the fourth train to our community. Protection from the potential high-speed rail project, and also continuing to look at funding so we can solve for the great separations. And finally, advocating for pavement rehabilitation and preservation. The last slide is talking, well, not the last slide, one to the next, to the last slide is continue the construction of our, one of our most significant projects, which is the Hill Avenue Extension and the corridor improvements, and completing the pedestrian and bike safety improvement projects. Finally, here we focus on the next big-ticket item for us in the community in the City of Morgan Hill, which is working on a transportation master plan. And the transportation master plan is going to help us review our current speeds that we have, and, but at the same time, looking at what kind of speed limits we can implement. Then we're looking forward to what sort of future growth we're going to have and what are those congestion management improvements that we need to assess and review to address future growth, again, being grounded with our Vision Zero, which is, again, all about pedestrian safety, safety for motor vehicle and bicycle as well, enhancing our bicycle and pedestrian connections, and looking at other public transportation alternatives. This is going to help us develop a goals for the system and also identify funding priorities. So, where we at with our transportation master plan? There is already an RFP that has been issued. We are reviewing applications, and we expect to come back to the council for your review on a contract, a potential contract as early as April. And that concludes my presentation.
Wow, you did get through it pretty quick. Nice job. Thank you. Gino?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chris. While you were on Vision Zero, I know at one time I asked for a little more critique of Vision Zero and how we can maybe beef it up and define it a little bit more. So, I just wanted to mention that, you know, going forward, maybe we can have that conversation.
Yeah, and if I could just jump in. So, that is on our list, and that's one of the items that we're planning to cover when the transportation master plan comes to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gino. Anyone else? Renee?
Thank you, Edith, for the update. You know, this is a topic we could talk all day long, but I want to pick a couple of things that you didn't talk about but that the city's doing. One of them is the Mogo program. I don't think we talk about that, not even nearly enough. This ties so well to our climate action plan as well, and I mention that to friends and residents in town all the time, and they don't know about it. They don't know how it works, they don't know...
I thought you said Pogo.
Mogo.
Pogo.
Can I jump in on that? Oh, yeah. So, as a matter of fact, it was something that we were going to talk about, but just what we focused on is things that we're kind of doing going forward. But absolutely, so we did a soft opening with a Mogo because we wanted to make sure that we worked out all the issues, the kinks, if you will. And so, we do have more of a push to let people know. We 100% agree, we've been working in conjunction with the school district, making sure they know about it, making sure that there's a lower rate, you know, if there's income issues. And so, yes, absolutely, because we're going to want to get to the point where people really are going to use it and it becomes to, you know, that it's at capacity so that we can get the grant to be renewed.
Can you quickly, someone might listen and explain what it is, someone might not know yet.
Yes, so we are very, very fortunate here to have three vans, three Mogo vans, and you'll see them going around town. It says Mogo on them, and it's very similar to an Uber or Lyft app. You can download the Mogo app and get on there, and it's basically point-to-point, but within, I think they... point-to-point, but within, I think they say a couple hundred feet of you, of the place that you want to go. And so you put in there what you want, the timing and so forth. And so I believe it's $2.50. I don't know if that sounds right. And then we have also a discount rate, $1. I've used it several times. It works. It's great. It's a great backup. So it's a, it's a great asset that we have right now.
Yes. And I agree. It's great and it's what needed. It is creative. It's a solution. And I think we're not nearly using it enough. And, you know, I'm also thinking in terms of connecting neighborhoods, right? New ones coming up that have no public transportation means at all. Or, for example, I'm looking at Brian and Kathy over there, when the Historical Society, for example, has an event that they promote Mogo and say, "This is how it can get to us," right? Not everyone has a car or the means to go there. And we have so many nonprofits and events and we should collaborate and promote and cross-promote over and over and over again. Because I don't think we'll get additional bus lines and all those big things. 101, that's probably not gonna have, expansion, not gonna happen in my lifetime. So I don't wanna focus on something that is, that is not gonna happen. I wanna focus on something that has an impact today, tomorrow, that we can make happen. And these kinds of programs are so valuable and helpful and also are very much aligned with our climate action plan goals and objectives.
And I think Michelle wants to add one quick, quick thing.
I just wanna say thank you, Renee. Your points are very well taken. Our team has been working with the Community Services Team. Christina was right. We did a solo rollout and we're starting to push it out right now. And I'll make sure that we meet with Nicole Martin, who's been spearheading this along with Mariah, to make sure that we reach out to those partner agencies and look for other opportunities to share the messaging. If you have other ideas, please don't hesitate to email them over.
Yeah. I think every event that someone has in the city should talk about Mogo too. How do you get there, right? Especially when they're at the aquatic center as well and so on, right? There's so much more we could do. And I appreciate that.
And that's absolute, that's the topic of our Farmers Market Meet coming up next Saturday. We will have the team there and we're sharing information about Mogo.
Yeah. And the other thing, I mention it almost every year since I've been on the council, is we really need to make sure, sure that we know what's happening in our neighborhoods with regards to speed and speeding. I see it in the neighborhood I live. We have more young families moving in again. That's great. They have the kids playing. And, you know, the worst offenders usually are the parents dropping off their kids. And in our case, it's Stratford School. And they just race through our neighborhood. They don't care about anything. And I really look at our police department and others to come out and enforce the rules that we have in place. And in every neighborhood where we have kids playing, not just downtown, we need to go in the neighborhoods and make them as safe as possible. This morning, I drove in here. I mean, it's crazy what you see happening just down the street here. That is not safe, what is happening here. So, so we can do a lot better. And I tied it all to Vision Zero and transportation.
Thank you, Renee. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Christina, real quickly, do we know what that number is as far as ridership for Mogo in order to get that grant renewed?
I don't.
Okay. Is there, there's a way to find out so we can try to make, I mean, it's always nice to know the goal so we can try to hit that. Because if we don't get that grant renewed, then it's on us. Is that correct?
Yeah.
My miracle worker, Michelle. So I don't know if it's just hitting a number, right? So, I mean, it's resources and whether or not those resources are gonna be available to allow the grant to move forward. So there's many factors, but one of them is certainly gonna be usage.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Please, go ahead, Yvonne.
Thanks. Three things. I love Mogo. I used, I lived in New York. They had something called the Burian Line. And it was, it was just buses like this that worked and they were routine. And everybody actually kind of considered it, thought it was public transportation, but it wasn't. It was just a private. So it works. And I'm really excited for it to work. I'm thinking maybe we can all take the Mogo challenge and like commit to using it a certain amount every month. I think that would be great. I know some people use it for kid pickup. You can use it, you know, whatever. So, and then the other thing is crossings. And I've had a lot of communication going on in my new district over off of Cochran. And I've shared some of that. But I, I really wanna see us in this new transportation plan, looking at some of those hotspots that, I mean, there's so much growth that's happened over there. And we've really gotta make sure that we're identifying where some of those areas have grown really strongly, that we're making sure we're staying, you know, staying on pace with the development that's going in there and slowing things down however we can. So I know that everybody is strapped, but if we can get that, I wanna get that on our calendar now because it looks like we're gonna be looking at the master plan for the transportation coming up. And with that, I would like to see if we could get any type of a kind of community calendar as far as when we're gonna be working on the master plan. I know that it's out at RFP. When will we, you know, get that back? It's coming back to councils. We just heard from Edith. And, but what does the community calendar look like? Once we get that back so that people can, who want to be engaged, can figure out how to be engaged. And I just wanna make sure that we have that coming out.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Yvonne. Okay. I think that's gonna bring us into the lunch hour, right?
Yes. So our next strategic priority is fiscal sustainability. Dat?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Datwing, President Director. And it's always a privilege and honor to have the conversation, one of the important strategic priorities, if not the most important, which is fiscal sustainability.
Thank you.
What is it? What's the definition according to the city? It is the city will continue to be financial steward of the resources and assets to ensure long-term fiscal sustainability. Through the budget development process, the city, within the fiscal sustainability path, will prudently carry out the city council's priorities while maintaining the adequate fund balance reserves. The city will continue to explore new and expand existing revenue sources to ensure fiscal sustainability. So what steps have we taken as a council and a city? In the past few years, we have updated budget policy to set aside to fund budget savings. Past few years, we were fortunate enough to have a sizable amount of savings that we can set aside to fund the, to fund and fund liabilities, including the street improvement maintenance and of course pension OPEF and most initially, the public safety equipment. And the city have worked with the downtown private property owners to form the P-Bid to help support the core needs of the downtown. And of course, we continue to regularly review and update the fees as necessary to have catch-up costs and needs. And the next council meeting, you'll see that on the agenda. Some of the opportunities and challenges that we're facing right now, I know that, I think we all know that the inflation had been coming down since the height, the height in the summer of last year, but this continued to be elevated high compared to our national past. Most economists have predicted that we see a slow growth to outright recession in the near future. And with the existing MAU that expire in a year, and not mentioned up here is the Cal Fire Contract will expire like June 30th. And we hope to bring that to council during mid-cycle budget adjustment in the next few months. I know we, we have, we could have a chance to sit down with our union rep and teammates to have, you know, could be a difficult conversation, but we all know that could be honest conversation. With the city continues to grow, so there's the need for the city services. What I have seen in the monthly budget update and our general fund forecast, you see some of the services are beyond there, especially the third fire station, but not all of them are beyond there. Like, you know, additional police officers. I know that the chief wants to maintain the ratio, I believe, to 1.2 FTE or 1.1 officers per 1,000. And we are nowhere near that. And we hope to address that in the long term. And so this one slide here lists some of the work plan going on for staff and the city council for currently as far as ongoing work plan. We will continue to seek grant funding opportunities. And I'll be to inform that we have been very successful in this front. I think, Christina, as you mentioned at the last council meeting, we, the city have been awarded $4 million in OPEC funding from MTC to fund the Monterey Road rehab project that we hope to commence in the next few years. That's why you see in the next council agenda, the half a million dollars for funding from the grant of funding from the Silicon Valley Green Energy for the full identification of the third fire station. And the city will hopefully continue to amplify new revenue sources to fund the city services in the medium to long term. Of course, we will continue to focus on cost containment. And we will negotiate, as mentioned, the MAU with our unions, responsibly labor agreements. And we hard to, hard to imagine to have this fiscally sustainable with our great team of plan for the economic development. With that, they will prioritize the project opportunities that create jobs, revenue, and enhance the quality of life for the city.
Thank you, Dat. So coming up for the council will be the mid-cycle budget review. And so we're going to be approaching our next fiscal year. And so what we'll bring forward to you is any recommended budget changes. And then I think what we're planning to do is to continue providing monthly budget updates, but we'll go back to bringing a verbal report every quarter. So with that, I open it up to the council.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments? I actually, if I could, I've got one. I saw when you, at the very start, you talked about new ways to generate revenue. Are there? Are there new ways? We're limited, right? We're very limited on what, what we can do to generate revenue.
Well, there's always new way to generate revenue, but is, is the community, if they're on board of it. But in the past, we have not been successful. So one way to do that is to enhance the existing revenue that we have. Most, especially, as I mentioned, most of the fees we could be able to charge to recover costs, as well as, you know, a great team from the economic development could bring in some of the projects that generate revenue for us.
Got it.
So primarily new to Morgan Hill, not new revenue sources that somebody came up with, great innovative ideas. But new funding mechanisms do occur.
Yeah.
Infrastructure funding and so forth.
Yep. Okay. Very good. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Good report. Renee?
Yeah. To follow up on that, the, you know, there's bills on federal level that got approved, infrastructure bills, and they're like, there's probably money to tap into on state level. And then of course, I look at my friends across the aisle here, economic development is key, right, of new funding revenues for the city. And I'm sure you'll talk about that in the next session. But I, it also has to go back to what we talked about earlier, right, when it comes to bills coming from the state, right? Almost, almost none of those bills help or provide funding for the city to offset costs to implement the bills. And I think this is where the advocacy really plays a key role. And we have to, to, to be much stronger and collaborate with whoever we can, including, you know, where we have a representation. I'm not, it's not just housing bills. It's others as well. And I, the money is there, but, but they don't give it, or maybe not to smaller cities like ours. And I think we could do more. And I'd like to see that somewhere in the work plan. I also would like us to explore more regional collaboration that might lead to increased revenues, A, or reduced expenses down the road. And I'm not just talking about collaborating with Gilroy, but maybe we should also collaborate more with cities up north, like, like the big one up north, right? And see, can we, is there a way to do something together, right, that would help both cities improve? I haven't heard much about that lately, but the whole regional aspect, we're the same region, right? We're South County and that includes South San Jose and so on. And I, I would like us to explore in a creative way, opportunities. And I'm making, I'm looking at Edith and team as well of what could be done. I don't know if you have some thoughts on that. If not, I'll just leave them as food for thought.
Just a couple brief comments. One, you referenced new legislation getting passed and the cities don't get money. Unfunded state mandates, so many of them coming out. And so yes, we definitely need to advocate against those. In addition to that, one big one that's gonna be coming your way, either March 15th or the first meeting of April, is the California Business Roundtable Initiative. And so the league is lobbying hard on that one. And that could be disastrous to the city's abilities to raise revenue. So that will be coming your way. And then in addition, I just wanted to mention, yes, absolutely, on regional coordination, Gilroy, we continue to have conversations. We meet with them. We're gonna meet with them quarterly. And then the staff, we also meet with Gilroy periodically. And then, you know, collaborating with San Jose as well.
Yep. Yep. And we're starting that, actually. I have a meeting with Mayor Mahan Monday morning. So we're gonna start that conversation. And I think we have an opportunity there to build a good relationship and, and do exactly what you're talking about. Good comments. Thank you, Renee. Anyone else? Yvonne?
Quickly, Dat.
Yvonne, real quickly, just, we are, we are against it?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
With the Planning Department, that was somewhere where we were looking at being underfunded. How is that going?
Underfunded in what area?
For planning.
Oh, I think what you're referring to is our Development Services Fund.
Right. With the lack of the impact fees that we've lost and things like that.
Yeah. So we have increased our fees recently. And so that's helping us bridge that gap. So it is getting better. And it's something that we're, you know, we report on with each of our monthly reports. Anything else to add, Dat?
No, that's right. That's correct. You have it.
And then there are some bills that are looking at sales tax and how those are distributed. We know the Business Roundtable, so I'm looking forward to, I think Renee's spot on with those as well, as where we can put some efforts.
Thank you, Yvonne. If there are no other comments by the council, then we do have, we'll open it up to public comment. Michelle?
Thank you. Doug Muirhead again. Morgan Hill, still. I especially appreciated the comments about regional cooperation and coordination that were just made. I'm thinking back to a comment that Water District Director Keegan made many years ago where she was trying to figure out how the Water District could get cities to talk to them as they did, you know, new development that might need some water. And her comment was, "We don't have a seat at the table. In fact, we don't even know there is a table." I've always appreciated that comment. And so I encourage you to try and help our northern neighbors and anybody else, for that matter, think of us when they're thinking themselves about things. Community outreach. I used to ask or suggest to council members, previous councils, that they do something that another city did, which was set up a table in front of a grocery store and just be there where people already were so that if they had a question, if they wanted to offer an opinion, they could, they could do so. That never took, but I was extremely pleased when our city clerk, wearing her PIO hat, started with the city booths at the farmer's market. I think it's a great idea. And it can actually be quite entertaining when Mr. Gianni happens to be there. He acts as a wrangler. He's just not gonna let people walk by and not say something or at least acknowledge the efforts that were there. So I just really appreciate that. My final comment is something that's missing from today, and that's water. I will simply say, the city has done a very good job in helping people understand how to conserve water. My follow-on to that is, what are we doing so we have water to conserve? Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Doug. And I know we don't typically comment on public comment, but I am going to this time. And that, your conversation, or at least your comment about, again, building these relationships. And I do have an ongoing monthly meeting with Chair Varela from the Water District. So again, we're just enhancing these relationships because we are gonna have some important issues to talk about, especially with regards to water. Thank you. John? Brian, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Rich.
Very good. Touche.
I couldn't hold up on that.
That was perfect. Good job.
I wasn't gonna speak on it, I think, because time's running late, but I wanted to comment on one thing that Dat brought up, the police, the 1.2 per thousand. That's the first time I've heard the city mention that figure. And that's a well-known figure throughout the United States. 1.2 officers per thousand residents. We are nowhere near that. And you talk about, you know, the traffic and speeding and people coming through areas inside the different residents. inside the different residents that we have, where there's issues with children and traffic not being enforced enough. We need more officers to do that. The city is trying very, very hard to control the traffic and the speeding throughout town, not just downtown, but in other areas also. So they do have two, I think, two motorcycle officers that are doing that now on the new bikes that we have, and they're doing extremely, very good job, but we do need more officers. And that's a funding issue, it's a very difficult one to come up with, but I hope the city and the council starts looking at that more in-depth and diligently. Thank you.
And we have added five new police officers over the last several months. So we're moving in the right direction.
It's almost, it's afternoon now, right?
Yes.
Good afternoon. Kathy Chavez, Napoli, and I'm a property owner here in Morgan Hill, and I belong to several organizations. But one important one, I think, is in communications and engagement, and I'd like to just have you all think about this, because first, people are not acknowledged anywhere, and we're hoping that you will think about having a land acknowledgement statement read at your city council meetings, because as a Native American, I know that many of our community are invisible here, and we've intentionally been erased. So if you could just please do that while you're talking about every community that's come here, that we acknowledge them, we respect them, but especially the first people, the Amamutsin here, throughout the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, I would ask, instead of taking an hour, could we do 45 minutes for lunch and start again at 1:15? Does that give everyone enough time, and we can kind of get back on track? Very good. We'll adjourn for lunch. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You got it. Thank you.[720.63]
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's time to get back to it. Thank you for giving us the extra 15 minutes for the lunch break. And so we are now moving into our next session with the economic development. So Christina, I'll turn it back over to you and then over to Matt.
I think I'm introducing this next segment.
Okay, Chris, go right ahead.
So, well, now it's Edith Ramirez.
Okay, very good. She's back.
For this one part is Edith Ramirez. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members and teammates and members of the public. Great to be here with you today. Just a little introduction. The focus of the next segment for us is to focus on the remaining strategic priorities, mostly economic development, housing, and homelessness. We also included planning because it's part of the implementation vehicle for us to execute on our strategic priorities. The team is here ready to present a quick overview of what our work program is and what are the priorities for us for this year. There's no change of policy. Again, the end goal is for us to just confirm that these are the strategic priorities for the city council. I invite you that if you have clarifying questions as the teammates are making their presentation, a quick clarification question is fine. But our intent is to go quickly through our presentation to provide as much time for you to have your dialogue. And with the end goal that we hopefully will finish by 3:00 PM. So we will, onto that, I will like to introduce our Economic Development Director, Mr. Matt Mayhood.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor, council members, fellow teammates, and members of the community. My name is Matt Mayhood. I'm the Economic Development Director for the City of Morgan Hill. And today we're going to give you a presentation and an update on the city's economic development work plan for 2023. You can see before you, I'm not going to read the slide, but we really just continue to focus on economic development around physical sustainability and improving the quality of life in Morgan Hill. We are focused on three things in economic development. That is attracting jobs, commercial investment, and then those revenues that generate essentially funds to support essential city services. I love this slide because it kind of shows you exactly where our tax collection is, where residents and visitors pay into various funds. So a resident pays property tax of every dollar they contribute in property tax. The City of Morgan Hill gets a dime. We get 10 cents. A resident or visitor will pay the 9% sales tax. We get a penny of that. And then the TOT tax is a nice return investment because every 11 cents, so we have an 11% TOT. And when the resident or visitor visits one of our hotels, we collect all 11 cents of that TOT. 62% of our general fund is supported by property, sales tax, and TOT. I also like this slide, and our police chief probably likes this slide the most. It's a way that we can really kind of enumerate our economic development impact. And so you know why we focus on what we focus on. A fully benefited police officer costs the city about $256,000 a year. That doesn't include for lieutenants, or sergeants, or captains, or a chief, but that's a benefited officer. And you can see that for each of these investments, a hotel with support through the general fund, 1.5 police officers, that's an upper mid-scale hotel. A very well-operating, well-run auto dealership can generate enough to support 2.5 police officers. And a Costco does really well if we had a Costco. So just keep that in mind. So as we look at economic development, we have a very clear vision in economic development that has been in place for several years. And this clear vision is the 2007 Economic Development, Economic Blueprint. We continue to focus on four key industry sectors: innovation and advanced manufacturing, retail, tourism, and healthcare. So within the innovation and advanced manufacturing space, this slide represents the most recently completed projects. I won't go through the list, but I will highlight that the Butterfield Five Technology Park, 410,000 square feet, is available for leasing. And we are actively working with the commercial brokers and the real estate folks who are active in our region, trying to identify users for this space. Most interesting is the entitled indoor processing projects. Cochrane Tech Park, which is also known as Redwood Tech, previously known as Redwood Tech. They are grading that site and they are actively pursuing construction. Then you have other projects, TechCon Headquarters, actively pursuing construction. Mercio Investments, they have filed, but we don't have full projects moving forward yet. And then two new projects, Barrett Avenue and Jaclyn Court, are two brand-new projects that just came forward. I should note that we used to have an industrial vacancy rate of about 3%. Because the completion of Cochrane, Butterfield Five, and the relocation of the Shoe Palace to their new facility, our vacancy rate in our industrial park is 11%. So we actually have space to welcome businesses coming to Morgan Hill, which wasn't the case in the past. One of our policies for-
I'm sorry, forgive me. Vacancy rate now is what?
Mercio Investments, are they new to our community, or do they own other things in the town?
So Mercio Investments is the family that owns the Shoe Palace, or formerly owned the Shoe Palace. And while they sold Shoe Palace to JD Sports, they're still part of the ownership group in a partnership with JD Sports. And they have taken the proceeds of the sale of Shoe Palace, and they have reinvested in the City of Morgan Hill. And they are one of our largest industrial and commercial property owners in the City of Morgan Hill now. So vacant industrial land. This slide is a little bit difficult to see because the colors don't necessarily play out all that well, but we have done a really good job of implementing the economic blueprint as it relates to industrial land. In 2020, the city had 161 acres of vacant industrial land. And what we heard from the experts, the best way to protect your industrial lands is to use them. We are now down to 92.5 acres of industrial land available. And some of the projects on the previous page are being proposed, which will ultimately fill these lands. But you can see the properties that are circled in the red are those properties that are currently vacant. So our industrial goals for 2023, again, continue to attract innovation and manufacturing, innovation, advanced manufacturing, R&amp;D companies, market and promote Morgan Hill, support the entitlement and permitting of industrial assets, and then support the teneting of the existing assets as they become available. In the retail space, retail is a critical driver for general fund revenue for the city. Our largest sales tax category is associated with auto transportation and fuel, so you need to think about auto dealers and gasoline. It equates to about 35% of our sales tax collection. Currently, we have 1.3 million square feet of existing retail. And we have several entitled retail centers that can expand their footprint. Madrone Village, Cochrane Commons Phase Two, which that used to be a much larger commercial footprint, but has now been reduced. But the city council, we are protecting 135,000 square feet along that Cochrane Corridor. And then Evergreen Village, there are about 10 acres of commercial property there. Our total vacancy rate in the commercial retail space is about 4%. We do have a couple longer-term vacancies, large, kind of mid-scale-sized properties at Laurel Oaks and Cochrane Plaza. They're about 20,000 to 20,000 square feet. Those are difficult-sized properties to lease, but we are working with brokers to identify some users for that. To that end, Brittany and I just attended ICSC, which is the International Conference of Shopping Centers, and we attended their conference in Monterey and continued to identify potential users coming to Morgan Hill. The good news is, we do have some new retailers coming soon. As many of you know, Party City will be vacating their current location. We can announce that Five Below is coming in. We're excited about that. There are kind of a high-end dollar store, really focused on teens and kids. And then we'll also have a replacement coming in for Staples, and I can't give you that name yet because the ink isn't quite dry. And then a potential tenant coming into Cochrane Plaza, who will remain unnamed as well, but to be announced shortly. This tells you really where the annual shopping center sales tax is distributed. And you can see by this slide that the Home Depot Safeway at Laurel Oaks is really our top-producing node, followed by Cochrane Commons with Target and Ulta. Our third performing is the tenant station, the Safeway there, and the gas station. And then I should note that our fourth-largest producing node is downtown. And what's remarkable about downtown is there's not a single big-box retailer in downtown. This is an accumulation of revenue generated by 100 small individual businesses. So some commercial- Yes, it does. Some commercial projects that are underway, although they're already operating, the Cardinale Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram dealer, they're operating on a temporary use permit, but they are trying to complete their 36,000-square-foot facility if the weather would only cooperate. Hotel Mohai, they have resubmitted their building permit with their addition of their fifth floor, so we hope to get them completely back underway here shortly. The Eves Gallery is under construction. We have projects occurring on Evergreen Village. And recently, Raising Canes came before the Planning Commission for a conceptual review of a project at Evergreen Village. Blue Wave Car Wash is under construction. And then Cochrane Commons Phase Two, the site is undeveloped, but we did meet with their retail lease consultant at ICSC, and he wishes that project was already built because he has tenants talking to him who want to locate in Morgan Hill. One of our key strategies on the retail sector is auto dealers. This is really important. It's 35%, again, 35% of our sales tax is auto-related. So we continue to focus on how do we really move the needle and acquire more auto dealers here in Morgan Hill? We have six preferred auto dealer sites, and so we're currently looking at and working with our teammates and planning to figure out how do we drive more incentives to support increased auto dealer users into Morgan Hill? So you'll probably be hearing more about that in the near future. We do have some tools, but we want to make sure we're utilizing all the incentive tools available to us to make sure that we're taking advantage and trying to capture the available market in Morgan Hill. This topic has been brought up at several council meetings with the passage of AB 2011 and SB 6 that take effect on July 1, 2023. We do want to make sure that we are protecting our vacant commercial lands. Again, the best way to protect commercial lands is to use them. But this map kind of indicates the number of vacant lands, 144 vacant acres of commercial land. We do believe that those properties that have a PD on them are protected from AB 2011 and SB 6. And we really think we only have about 20 acres that are really at high risk, really those orange properties along Monterey Road that are at highest risk of conversion. Now, I should say that any commercial property could be converted based on AB 2011 and SB 6, but it's highly unlikely that with our commercial, successful commercial nodes, that those properties are going to be redeveloped to housing. It just simply won't pencil necessarily for the landowner. So our retail goals, really implementation of that retail concentration strategy and protecting our key retail nodes and making sure we're reinvesting in those nodes. Focus on auto dealers and hotels. Continue to develop downtown, really implement our P-Bid, and take advantage of any vacant retail space to bring in new retailers. Make sure we get the downtown hotel completed. Implement a retail incubator program, which really is utilizing our Sidewalk Saturday program, potentially small kiosks, and making sure that we look at potentially having, not like, it's not coworking space, but it's having retailers co-inhabit shared space. And last is making sure that we develop our commercial lands. The best way to protect those lands, again, is to utilize them. Next, on to tourism. We do have Visit Morgan Hill, which is our T-Bid, our Tourism Business Improvement District. The city staff works very well with our partners at Visit Morgan Hill. The T-Bid really got up and running, and then COVID hit. So the T-Bid has really spent the last two years really building its platform, building its platform around social media and marketing, and doing outreach with our partners in the media to help drive awareness of Morgan Hill. So right now, it's really about implementing that strategy. For the city, it's really our focus on downtown development and investment. So getting the downtown hotel completed, the gallery completed, and then continue to make sure that our restaurants are successful in downtown, making sure that Morgan Hill, our living room, is a great place for people to visit. And also, the last thing is making sure that we partner with our city teammates as they look at the recreation, sports and recreation master plan, and making sure that we're actively supporting their work there. And then lastly, it ties into hotels. We want to make sure that we continue to implement the hotel incentive policy that the city council recently passed. We do have hotel preferred sites where we'd like to identify and locate a couple hotels. At ICSC, we met with a couple hotel developers. They're interested in looking at Morgan Hill, and we'll continue to follow up with them as well. I should note that on the bottom right-hand side of this presentation is a picture of the existing Holiday Inn Express. Over the course of the next year or two, they intend to renovate that property, lose their Holiday Inn Express brand, and move over to a tribute brand by Marriott. Last for tourism, again, look to attract new hotel investment and reinvestment, implement the downtown property-based improvement district, which is really a lot of work by myself and my teammate Brittany Sherman, and then support Visit Morgan Hill in their work. And last, but certainly not least, healthcare. This is a critically important industry sector for our community. We've heard long, for a long time, that residents of Morgan Hill want more healthcare services, medical services in the City of Morgan Hill. We have limited options. The DePaul Healthcare Center is under renovation. It served as an overflow for Santa Clara County during COVID. They should be completing their renovation in 2023, this summer, with expanded services. We have updated our zoning to allow medical uses in virtually every zoning area, light industrial and commercial. Actually, received a phone call from a broker yesterday, trying to locate a regional medical user into the City of Morgan Hill, and he was pleasantly pleased to know that he could potentially put it anywhere. So the last piece is entitled site. We do have an entitled site for a future healthcare and medical facility. That is our Rosewood site at Juan Hernandez and Tenet, owned by Brookfield. And part of our work plan is to make sure that we support their entitlements for the Rosewood Healthcare Center. That's the biggest and best thing the economic development team can do for growing this industry sector, is to make sure that we get their entitlements completed and work with them to market and promote Morgan Hill. There is significant interest in the market to locate facilities in Morgan Hill, so we need to be ready when those users are ready to employ a strategy of growing in Morgan Hill. And the last thing is to support the DePaul Medical Center renovation and make sure their services get operating this summer. And with that, I'm open to questions.
Nicely done. If the council would allow me, I was supposed to start off prior to Matt's presentation with the public comment to accommodate a few folks who need to move on after that. So if you would allow me to do the open or the public comment, and then we'll come back to questions and comments here? Very good. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate it. Both Glenn and I appreciate it, especially regarding DePaul, because Glenn is on the Valley Med Board Foundation, would be more than happy to work with you on that. And I had only one other comment on what you were presenting, Matt. My dad and I worked with him, and that was responsible for the First Toyota store in San Jose area, off of North First Street. So good luck on that, and I know you can do it. So my name is Rocky Garcia, just for the record. We have been home builders and developers in Morgan Hill for over 45 years. We call this home, most definitely home. We're doing a project, a 70-acre project out at the corner of Hill and Barrett in eastern Morgan Hill. The specific reason I'm here today is to talk about seniors and to put seniors at the top of our list. It's very, very important. I've given to everybody, I hope you have it, my little card that I have here that I'm kind of repeating. But the project itself is senior-centric. Everything from the trails going through to Jackson Park, for the adult seniors to walk their dogs there, because there will be a part of a dog park, to the kids being able to walk to Jackson School, to also being at Jackson School, we're going to do part of the park will have an amphitheater because it's Jackson math and music. Hopefully, that will all work together. We're very, very excited about it. And again, the most exciting part that I have about it, and we will be working with Ms. Rebecca, who has the correct last name. Is this senior part of it? Because we're going to have both senior duets, one-bedroom and two-bedroom, and senior detached homes that will also have an ADU on the top of it. And those are the senior cottages, or we call them, are two- and three-bedroom units, and then the ADU that will be on above the garage. Very excited about that. The other thing, and just kind of backing up what Mr. Mahood has said, is that New Horizons is a project of, basically, of single-family detached homes, large homes. Our D.R. Horton, who we've worked with quite a bit in the past, is going to be our major builder. Glenda and Rocky Garcia are going to be building the senior part of the project. As I kind of described, they're on each side of the park. Our number-one goal, again, is to make sure that we keep seniors here, and how do we do it? And we think this is the way to do it. So I'd like to just kind of, in advance, as a senior citizen, thank Rebecca for working with us, as well as Jennifer Carmen, in a great endeavor, and be more than happy to answer any questions outside. And I appreciate letting me talk first, so I can go to my-
You got it. Thank you, Rocky. Shall anyone else? And we'll do public comment again as we go forward, but if no one else will go, okay. No one else then? Okay, council, any questions? Marilyn, please.
If you have some questions, Matt. You announced that Holiday Inn Express is going to go under renovation and then become perhaps a Marriott. I heard, though, that there was going to be-
I'm not on, I'm sorry. I did hear that there is going to be another Holiday Inn Express somewhere in town. Is that correct? Will it be same owners, or?
We're currently working on that. The Katina Group has bought the property at Evergreen Village, and they are going through the permitting entitlement process right now for 116-room Holiday Inn Express.
Okay, great. Okay. Change subjects just a bit to healthcare. You said DePaul's under renovation. Are they going to have inpatient?
They are focused on primary care, urgent care, women's care, pediatrics, diagnostic, laboratory services, and a pharmacy. And they expect to open in 2023, but no hospital beds.
Okay. At one time, it was talked about becoming a senior facility, like a skilled nursing or something. Is that-
Yes.
-been talked about at all?
That's in their plan for 2024, I believe.
Excellent. Yeah, I know the building has to be retrofitted for earthquakes, so it's a lovely building, but it's not up to standard. So I hope to see that go forward. I think we need that in this city. We don't have those kind of facilities. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Marilyn. Gino, then Renee.
Thank you, Mayor. So Matt, you made an interesting comment about Cochrane Commons, that if that site was developed, the builder or the owner already would have had tenants going in there. Is it him knowing these tenants, or you working with him to bring these tenants down to Morgan Hill?
So this is a representative from Bremman Development that we met with at ICSC just on Tuesday morning. And his words, I'm using his words, and this is someone who I just met. He just recently joined Bremman in the last probably five or six months. His words were, "I wish the project was already built. I have tenants who want to locate in Morgan Hill."
Can we locate some of these tenants in other places in Morgan Hill, other than Cochrane Commons?
Our vacancy rate on the commercial retail side is really low, so we don't have places to put them right now. And I do believe they want to be in that core along Cochrane because of the pre-existing businesses that there, and it's a driver.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for working with these groups and getting our name out there to these various organizations. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Gino. Renee?
My questions are all over the place, and thank you for the opportunity. The first one, not far from where I live, is Butterfield Five, those huge buildings. Any thing you hear about that- Any thing you hear about that might sound promising, that someone eventually will move in soon?
I hear lots of things. But I hear lots of things. Here's the worst-kept secret, and Edith will probably kill me for saying this. It's the worst-kept secret in commercial development. We were really close to having a really great user coming to the city of Morgan Hill just after Thanksgiving. We were, I mean, the press release was being written. We thought the deal was done, and then it wasn't. That's why we don't announce these things until they're done. So Invesco kind of has gone, had to go back to square one and starting over with some previous folks who they were talking to before. So there is some interest. Right now, we're dealing with a little bit of a downturn in the tech economy and a repositioning, but we think these tenants will definitely be coming back in early spring.
So based upon what you hear, and I'm not going to nail you down, but what is your confidence level by when someone might move in?
I don't have that type of crystal ball. I wish I did.
Yeah, and that's good enough. I don't want to put you more on the spot on that one. Maybe a question for you, Jennifer, because it ties to a discussion we had at last plan, planning convention, last council meeting. I also was under the impression that the PD, the PD would protect the retail pieces underneath that PD, right, when we talked about that weird location up there on Monterey. But then, in the same evening, if I recall the meeting correctly, there's also voices that came up, I thought it was our city attorney, who said, "Well, someone could come in and just build anything there, housing." So which one is it?
So we have two different types of PDs in the city. We have PDs that are fully flushed out with zoning and development standards and uses that are allowed in them. And then we have sites where PDs were put on them but never really created. And we call those the PD shell. And the PD shells are the ones that could be developed. PDs right now that are fully flushed out have been determined to be protected by our city attorney's office.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification, because that was a bit confusing to me. And I tie that back because of that June deadline coming, or July, I forgot now, that you just referred to as well. So are we sure that our locations, the ones especially that we want to keep as retail and commercial, are protected? It might be a legal question even, right?
It definitely could be. There are different factors for each one. So I think one of the PD sites that most comes up with inquiries right now is what's known as China Bay at Condit and Dunn. That is actually a PD that has teeth in it, and it has been flushed out. Needs a little more work, but it wouldn't be considered a shell. So I don't know, Cynthia, if you want to...
It's been our office's interpretation that those with the PDs that have the plans and the specified uses would be protected from the upcoming legislation. But until HCD releases their regulations and guidance, there is a risk that we possibly could be challenged on that by the owners of the property.
So the industrial light is very similar, right, from the kind of businesses that can go into location. Would those then be protected for sure, those areas, if they were zoned as industrial light?
If they're zoned industrial, they are protected. They're not part of the new legislation. It's only if they're zoned commercial with retail parking as the primary uses.
The reason I'm asking, is that something we should consider again? We don't have much time, but do you really make sure we protect what we can?
It is something that the city council could consider.
I think the thing we'd, maybe Jennifer's better prepared to answer this, but I think if we start looking to rezone any commercial properties into an industrial, then we lose some flexibility on the commercial side as to what we could potentially, you know, what users we could put into those sites. And I think I'll reiterate, you know, city staff, we've done a fairly, you know, done a risk assessment looking at all of the vacant properties. And really, the properties that are most at risk are some small properties along Monterey that aren't a high priority for us to protect. They're likely to probably go to mixed use anyways. And then there's another property that is, that would be a high-value commercial property, but it potentially has environmental issues, so it's going to be difficult to develop residential there. And some of the other ones are really close to the freeway, which is, they're protected from AB 2011 because of their proximity close to the highway and neighboring industrial properties. So I think we're fairly well mitigating our risk along with those things with a PD.
Yeah, and I want to be on record, for me, the worst that will happen is then that assumption will not fly, and then we end up having housing. And then you won't have the choice that you just referred to, right, as an alternative.
As Cynthia said, HCD will make interpretations of the law. There will also be case law, as different cities are challenged, municipalities are challenged on that. We would not want to be the first. Nobody wants to be the first. But, you know, I think we do have a lot of strategies that we're looking at. I know as a region, everyone is getting together, figuring out the nuances of the law, what we could do to protect commercial lands, and which of the laws would most likely come into play. There's a lot of restrictions on AB 2011. For example, any parcel within 500 feet of the freeway is not able to use AB 2011, flood zones, fire zones, et cetera. So that eliminates a lot of the concern for anything adjacent, like off of Cochrane, or maybe even the China Bay parcel off of Dunn. But SB 6 would still have to go through a process, and there'd be discussion. But we will be coming back to looking at strategies for dealing with this, including creative options of moving forward.
Yeah, I appreciate, I'm just worried about that June-July deadline kicking in soon, right? And I asked about that before. I just want to make sure we look at it from every angle and are creative to protect what we need to and can protect legally, from being converted into housing. Because I agree with you, I'd like to have that flexibility too, but I just don't want to lose it to housing, right?
Well, as I sit here, I think about, you know, reiterating what I said before, is the best way to protect lands is to utilize them, develop them. So maybe another strategy is creating incentives to get developers to come forward with plans that aren't residential, that are commercial retail projects.
Yeah. Do we know when someone will come back with, well, Jennifer just hinted at?
We don't have a plan or a date, but we could certainly work through Christina to come back with strategies that we've examined.
I did request that before, so I should show up somewhere in your long pipeline of things to do. But it might be time-sensitive. That's why I bring it up again today. You know, the other thought, the more I read, is EV charging stations and... I don't know what the new term is. They're not going to be gas station anymore, but Shell just bought a whole EV charging company, right? And they will convert to, somewhere in the near future, we'll not have gas station anymore. We'll call them something else. Not quite sure yet what the new... Where, when you start thinking about where are we with regards to looking, where these kinds of businesses should be at, or which gas station we should convert to? And the reason I'm asking is, I think this also will bring in more people into our area. Because a lot of people buy those cars, but if they can't charge them in our community, they will not come into our community, because they will run out of battery life, right? So, and I think the more of those cars are being sold, and they are big and trendy, I think we need to keep up with that trend, right? And I hear that quite often, that, I don't have data, but I hear it, is that we don't have enough charging stations for people to come in, especially not in the location where they want to be at.
And at the speed that we need, which is the fastest chargers.
The fast ones, yeah.
We've even had inquiries from new gas stations that would like to come in, and their design actually allows them to convert to exclusively electric fuel, I guess is one way we can call it, but full-on charging stations.
Right, but I think that should become part of our strategy. I don't know where it fits in, right, as well, to really make sure we have enough, so that, whether it's part of the tourism piece, or I don't know which one it fits in, but we have to make sure people come here, because we have, they can charge their cars quickly as they go for dinner or shop or do something. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I do believe at a recent city council meeting, we did adopt new requirements for additional EV charging at all new developments.
And that was part of the overall code update. And we are seeing new installations go in, i.e. at Cochrane Commons, in a space that people have somewhere to go while their car is sitting there for a half-hour charging, or hopefully less, as they get more efficient. But that's where you want those facilities, where people have a place to go and spend money in the community.
So it was a couple of years back, I think, when we had it, and now shifting to the medical locations and providers. You know, Juan Hernandez, what was her name, Estelle, whatever her name is, right? And I will never forget how many times she mentioned in that meeting, "It is, I'm going to sign tomorrow. I'll have it," right? And I think once again, I was fooled, and we still don't have anything there. But we so need, we're a nitrogen community, as many others, we so need these kinds of services. Where are we? Are we getting any closer, or is it still? We're that close to having something signed. I don't know who's following up on that.
So a couple of things. I just pulled up the follow-up list. So we do show that we are bringing back the commercial preservation. We just don't have the specific council meeting yet, so we'll be back to you on that. And then as far as Rosewood goes, so what the council decided was that in order to move forward with the approval, that the necessary infrastructure for medical would be put in before they could move forward with a residential. And it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that infrastructure has been put in place.
It will be put in place. It's part of the residential development.
Okay.
Right, but the piece, I'm interested in this more, more of the medical part, right?
Let me try to answer that. We are seeing good progress being made on the medical aspect of the planning. The lead developer, not CC now, but Joe Wera with Brookfield Development, is in active and frequent conversations with the team and is, as a matter of fact, planning to submit for amendments to the PD, because the feedback that he has gotten from the medical providers that are interested in coming into the community is that they want more space. So he has a number of potential hospitals or medical users that are in conversations with him, and they essentially are looking to see if there is an opportunity to expand beyond what is currently permitted under the PD. Jennifer Carmen, our Development Services Director, is assisting with the processing of that new application. So all is heading in the right direction, and we expect that that is going to be submitted and finalized very shortly.
And that would be in the same location?
In the same location, just going to have, it means that we can expect more buildings and perhaps going higher.
So the piece, the residential piece being built, is that a different owner?
Same ownership.
So could they also just build less of that part and expand? Why not?
So they're moving forward with a residential. That is already well underway with, moving forward with the grading permit for that. But they are exploring what they can do with the existing medical. And as a reminder to us, a good benefit of having Brookfield at the table is that that company is large enough, and they have, they're pretty well diversified, that they themselves could proceed with moving forward and constructing the medical. They have indicated to us that their intention is to sell it. That is their preference. But otherwise, they have assured us that they can move forward with building the medical and then negotiating something after the fact.
Renee, if I can get you to, if you had a point here of wrapping that up?
Yes, I have. My one last question.
Please go, Renee.
Those are important ones, right? They're really of interest to our residents too. And it is so hard to find a medical provider in our city, almost impossible, because none of them take new patients. I tried myself. I couldn't. So Amazon just recently bought One Medical, the group, right? And I looked it up. They don't have a location in our area, south of, way south, San Jose and south. They're more further up, north San Jose and then up. And I think these are the kinds of medical businesses that would be wonderful to have in our community. And I don't know if any of you have approached One Medical to see if there's maybe a way to bring them down here, now that they have a good backer and good owner.
We just made a connection with them at ICSC in Monterey this week.
So if you hear something in that area, it doesn't have to be that provider. I think a lot of residents are waiting for us to get these kinds of businesses and providers down here. Thank you. I'm done.
Thanks, Renee. Yvonne?
Thank you, ma'am. That's good to hear, Eda. Thank you. Not all developers are able to do, switch from housing to medical. So that's a great reassurance. And are we to understand that it's, they're looking to do more, a bigger footprint on that medical than what they came to us with? Okay. Matt, I wanted to ask if you could tell me, you talked about a retail incubator program, which I'm very excited about. I've talked about incubation programs quite a bit since Steve and I got on this council. So I'd love to hear what the retail incubation program is.
So right now, it has been really operating as the city, when we went into COVID, to really expand small business retail opportunities. So taking the Sidewalk Saturday program, and the city started Sidewalk Saturdays. I think Hillary was the one who helped start that program. And Brittany Sherman has taken that on and continuing to run the program and grow it. It runs in the spring and the fall. We're going to continue to grow that program. It'll start again, I think, the first weekend in April, so that's one part. And we're continuing to look at new small businesses to come in. There's been a lot of interest. Two is, we have been working with some property owners to identify available retail space where small retailers that, similar to those who come to a Sidewalk Saturday, who aren't big enough to really, you know, operate their own business and afford a lease and all of those things, where they could co-locate, you could have multiple businesses co-locate into a single retail space and start operating. So we're trying to identify a space where that would work. And the third is a retail kiosk program, potentially in, like a parklet, where we could have retail kiosks located in the downtown, where we could help small businesses incubate on a retail basis.
Okay, similar to the San Pedro area.
Yeah, kind of similar to that. We've seen programs in San Jose, Santa Cruz, and others.
Okay. I really like the idea of growing the Sidewalk Saturday and the retail incubation. We have a small business. I know we've looked many times. I've even talked, you know, with people about getting some brick and mortar to do that. And it's, I think this is a perfect place for us to kind of incubate our own new businesses that we can call our own and grow. So I'm really happy to see that happen. As part of that, I'm hoping that we will include the new announcement from the county of $20 million being invested from the American Rescue Plan Act. Supervisor Ellen Burgel led that with our own supervisor, Arenas. And basically, investing in childcare that was eradicated during COVID, because everybody was working at home, and now we're short so many providers. So hoping we can maybe try and tap into getting some of those grant funds and getting some of those providers in our community. I know there's a need, because in our circle, we're talking, there's a lot of talk about there is an availability, kind of like you're talking about taking new appointments, but a lot of places weren't taking kids, because there was nowhere to put them. So hopefully, we can do that and also get some more worker productivity and more in health, more tax dollars. Then I wanted to ask... dollars. Then I wanted to ask about the retail areas. So, I saw on one of these slides, if you could maybe bring it up, with the bubble chart where we have all the different sales tax that we generate. And if we're looking at the downtown, I think it was about 500,000 in a black bubble it looked like. Can you tell me what areas are included in that?
So, it's going to, what's included in that?
Yeah.
Do you mean the boundary set downtown, council member?
That one, right there. The black bubble, I believe, is downtown, so 556. What's included in downtown? So, is it just the small area there? Because what I don't see here is I don't see the Región Market Shopping Center. Is that not in there, or is that part of that bubble?
I do not believe it's part of that bubble.
Okay. So, maybe next, if we could get that. I also would be interested to find out the right shopping center that's on Monterey, before you go ahead and see a little bubble there. What I'm getting as I'm looking at all of these, we've got the Dunn area for 765, why Safeway, Home Depot. The other day, I was just there and, and thinking, we really need some restaurants. The only real restaurant in that area is Yolke. So, if you wanna have breakfast, great, and you can go eat before two or three o'clock, you're golden. But after that, there's really nowhere for those community members to just go very close by, walk and get something, and it would be great if we could encourage that. And then also looking at our tenant station and Vineyard combined, the 618 with the 307, that's a million dollars. I guess what I'm getting at is mainly, I would like to see a focus shift. I feel like we've done a lot in downtown, and we now have the P-Bed, and we can continue to, but we've got some real golden, I think, gooses that we need to double down on. So, for example, Christmas, I would love to see lights over by Cochran Commons and down, you know, Cochran Boulevard. We now got Evergreen, and bring some shopping there. There's Target, there's, you know, Walmart, Big Five, Dick's. I think we could really benefit on that and getting people to shop more. Same with Vineyard and Tenant. Tenant Station has been an anchor here forever, and look at what it's doing. We've got a million dollars done.
There's a lot of detail that you're discussing about lights and things like that. Could you, could you summarize and get to the point more quickly?
My point is that I think we need to shift from, you know, where we've put, we've invested a lot of time and dollars. I would like to see us do that in some of these other areas. And I'd be interested to see what those numbers at Región are. We're putting in a new Hale Avenue. I think we should also invest in that shopping center. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Yvonne. Anyone else? I have no questions. Matt, great presentation. Thank you. Very well done. Christina?
Okay. Over.
Sure. So, we're gonna, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are gonna try to make up some time. Again, Jennifer Carmen, our Development Services Director, is going to just share with us a little bit about the planning function that supports, again, economic development and the housing strategic priorities for you.
Great. So, hold up your hand if I'm going too fast, because we're gonna try and speed through this to catch up, just like you said.
Some of the slides you've seen recently, because we went through Rena and the housing element, so she's not gonna cover every bullet on every slide. It's background material.
Right, and they know I can talk about planning for like a whole day, so we won't do that today. So, the City for Entitlements, we run with guiding documents, the highest being the general plan. Everything builds off of that, zoning ordinance, our master plans and city standards, numerous infrastructure plans. We're gonna be starting the transportation master plan, as well as our design standards, objective design standards for housing, engineering standards for different things that folks have to do with individual projects. All play a role. So, the general plans required by law, we last adopted a new one in 2016. We're required to review and/or update every 10 years, and there's a list of required elements that are required by the state. So, in response to questions that have come up from council members and the public, how do we determine general plan consistency? So, consistency is a really tough question, like what does it mean and what are we talking about? So, we're talking about the policies in the general plan and what's laid out in the document itself, and whether or not a project is consistent with that. So, when a project comes through, we do analyze it. Every project approval has a detailed general plan consistency finding. And we do get the question of, why don't we bring things for denial? And why don't we say things are inconsistent with the general plan? If someone applies for something that's inconsistent, we will tell them we're not gonna process it. We haven't had an applicant yet insist on the processing, even though we're gonna have to recommend denial because it's inconsistent with the general plan. The consistency findings have no relation to the EIR. It is the policies in the plan that are referenced with a consistency finding. Getting to the EIR, there's been a lot of questions on where are we with development progress? How much have we done since the adoption of the last general plan? And we are still working on a detailed analysis of all of the approved development that has happened since adoption in 2016. But what we did for today to give you a really great snapshot is look at the reports that we prepare for VTA, the Valley Transportation Authority, and their congestion management program. It's every year, there's a list of approved projects with the square footage and land use code, so we were able to approximate where we are as far as approved development as of last, of June 30th, 2022, and compare that to the horizon year and the general plan and our full build-out projections. What we learned was, and we detail it in the briefing, is that we did have a lot of industrial development, where I think the projections during the development of the general plan expected commercial development. And so, you see from the numbers that we're a little short on commercial in compared to the horizon numbers, and we're very close to the horizon numbers for industrial. That said, the horizon year is a projection. It's not a limit. The build-out is the limit. And so, we're continuing to move forward. As long as our infrastructure supports the development that's moving forward, we're still in line with our general plan EIR. There are policies in the general plan that say, should we exceed the horizon, we have people do CEQA to ensure that they're still, that we can still service those projects under our infrastructure. So, and this just goes through what I just said about capacity, but we'll leave that there. And then, we wanted to also give you a layout of what our permit process is. This is our, our general permit process. New, new state laws has altered some of the timelines and the roundabouts for recirculating plans, but you can see just the basic of who's responsible for what, who appeals to who, and how the process actually works. The Permit Streamlining Act is the act that sets time limits on the completeness review and processing of applications. This is also changing depending on what housing law an applicant is applying under. Applications can be deemed complete and deemed approved if timelines aren't met under the PSA, that's what we call the Permit Streamlining Act, and new state law related to housing. The overall land use process is governed by the government code. We have included a link in this slide presentation to a legal overview for land use that Cynthia prepared, and is a handy reference on our website. State laws, lots of new state laws. We've talked about those today. Staff does keep up with what is happening out there, new laws that have popped up, and we do raise the flag and start tracking them when, when we learn about them. And all of our professional agencies or organizations are all tracking new legislation. This is a list of some of the things we went through during the January 25 legislative update. Recent significant projects, our, our shop is doing a lot that isn't related to actual development. This is a list of a number of different processes and, and projects that we've completed, and a list of key projects for 2023, looking at the VMT policies, getting those established so we can streamline CEQA in relation to VMT, working with our engineering team on the transportation master plan, completing the form-based code, and looking at our future general plan elements that we're gonna be required to do, including an environmental justice element. So, thank you.
Oh, that was quick. Thank you. Renee?
Thank you, Jennifer. On slide 50, at the table.
This one?
Yes, that one. So, this one refers to the, the projection for residents per, by 2035 to be 68,000.
Correct. Our general plan calls, and there's footnotes in the briefing that you received related to these numbers. So, the general plan document calls out for a 2035 population of 58,200 residents. The EIR looked at the full build-out amount, and so those are the numbers from the EIR. We took the table and moved them in, and that's why we have a note in there that references back to the 58,000.
Right, because I was part of those discussions in those years, and they were very heated on the numbers. There were various targets discussed, and the one we said, we don't wanna exceed 60,000. And Measure S actually had the numbers, that 58,200 in it, right, that the voters approved. So, this is 10,000 more that, that I don't understand how we were now just this, why are we forgetting about the 58,200 in those projections?
We're not. So, Measure S called for 58,200 in a, in a general plan policy, CNF 3.4. But Measure S was suspended as part of SB 330. And for the analysis on this table, what we took was the horizon projection from the EIR, and what that studied was the 68,000. That's the only reason why that 68,000 sits there, and why we reference back to the policy that said the 58,200 in the footnotes on the table.
Okay, let me ask differently. If we continue to grow with the current speed, by when, you think, in what year would we achieve 58,000?
We would, I would have to calculate that out to determine the year.
Okay. Do you, I don't, I apologize if I put you on the spot, but you think it would be prior to 2035?
Potentially, but very, much closer to 2035. We're not seeing our population increase as much as was previously expected. And what we are finding is our, the Department of Finance estimates come in a little bit lower. So, while we have our approved development number in here of the 47,738, our Department of Finance estimates for our population is 45, 46,451. So, the numbers are a little fluid. Also, the number of residents per unit changes as well. It used to be a little more closer to three, now it's 2.9. So, it's, it really varies with time. The one thing I would say is the horizon year projection is just that there was a projection. It's not a limit. And the general plan does provide for going on, going beyond the horizon projection so long as we're doing CEQA.
Right. So, again, I was part of the general plan discussion, development creation, whatever you call it, and always advocated for the lowest number we can.
Absolutely.
We can reasonably target, and to grow gradually, smartly, controlled, right? And that's clearly, none of that is happening anymore. But that's why I struggle, you know, and I appreciate how you explain it, how, when you come with new projects, how we can say that are consistent with our general plan, when I think, no, that's, how can it be? It's, we're growing way, way too fast. And there was that spirit over and over again when we talked about the general plan. Let's not grow more than needed, right? Let's do it gradually, controlled. So, so how can all those projects all of a sudden be consistent with the general plan?
I don't know if Cynthia would like to weigh in here, but a number of our policies were suspended with new state law. The growth cap, the growth management policies, we're not able to modify or require that population goes up on a certain increase by year. That's no longer within our control or ability. And so, we don't believe that we're gonna be looking at that 58,200 anytime soon. But we do think it will move slightly forward a little bit faster than what was originally planned.
Right. So, you know, sometimes as a council, we have to, to come up with certain findings, whether or not we're complying with general plan. And it's fairly easy to come up and say it's the compliant, but it's also fairly easy to say they're not, right? Depending which policies you look into, whether it's, you know, quality of life, transportation impacts, you name it, it's easy to find. So, how many, you mentioned, I didn't know that, but obviously, once in a while, you turn a project down, because you already make the finding on staff level that they're not complying with the general plan. How many of those denials do we have?
Well, we, we don't, so, we get the, not only about the general plan consistency, but we get that question a lot. Why does Plan Commission approve everything that we bring forward? Why don't they deny things on a more regular basis? Because we sit the applicant down, and we have very honest conversations about the challenges they're gonna have getting approvals, the issues around some of the, the project elements, the, the issues with the general plan or the zoning ordinance, and the exceptions that they're asking for. And often, they don't move forward, or they make changes to their projects in order to move forward. I would say we've had maybe two in my tenure that were so inconsistent with the general plan, we rejected them out of hand. I don't remember the specifics of them, but I do know we've told people, no, that's really not gonna work.
Okay. And my last question is, what is your biggest, what keeps you up at night? What is your biggest headache this year in your department?
That's a, that's a really, I could go so many ways with that question. I think we're, as. From, from the planning side, you know, we are the regulatory agency. My biggest interest is keeping the city safe from things that we really don't wanna see, while still making sure that we're, we're moving forward in a way that keep us, keeps us compliant with state law, that no one could point to us as, as a problem child of sorts, and that we're still eligible for all funding grants and everything else. So, it's about protection, and that is the goal. And it's, it may not seem that way to folks, because they're seeing a lot of change around them. And it's really hard for folks to see buildings going up, seeing what used to be vacant land being built on. But there is an expectation that these things do happen as communities grow, but we're trying to do it in a way that both meets the tenants of state law and still tries to create projects that are Morgan Hill. Some of the best examples are the project at Old Monterey. Those are three-story townhomes. They're, they're not what we've seen historically, but they look like Morgan Hill. They have that farmhouse aesthetic. They're coming in in a color palette that blends better. And we really are struggling to make sure that, within our limited power, to really advocate for things that fit into the city, even though I know a lot of people don't believe that they do, because they're, they're different. They're rental, they're taller, they're bigger. But we do try to affect that change where we can. And luck, we've been very lucky so far. The developers have been very responsive, even though they don't have to be. And I think as, as we continue to refine our objective standards, we'll develop even more ways to make sure that happens.
I appreciate your answer. Your heart is in the right spot. I might not always agree with what's happening either, but I, I want you to know, I really appreciate what you're doing and your teammates. Thank you.
That's what you do, does this.
Yeah, and again, I think it's always good to recognize staff when they're, because they're working hard and doing the best they can. They've got, they're up against certain challenges as well, and we, we may put pressure on them from the council side, but you guys are all doing a wonderful job. Thank you. Thanks, Renee. Marilyn?
Just want to add quickly. I was not on the same committee he was as general plan, but I was on council at that time. And I can tell you, as a council, we struggled with the numbers, the caps. And it saddens me to see those caps are not still in place, because it was a lot of hard work for all of us to come to. because it was a lot of hard work for all of us to come to something we all agreed on. So, um, thank you for your explanation of what we're, you know, what is going on, because I was wondering, was that just, why did we work so hard on something that's not even, you know, doable now? And, um, you know, my biggest concern is, do we have the infrastructure, you know? And you explained that you do look at that, but I want to make sure we have the police. We have emergency, you know, Cal fires involved, and schools, and water, and all the, you know, the list goes on and on. And we took those all into consideration when we did put a cap on it. So, it's just, it saddens me, and I guess there's just not much we can do. However, I think 10,000 is okay. I can swallow that, you know? But if it went like 30, 40, whatever, thousand, I'd be really, really upset. So, thank you for all you're doing to keep the feel of Morgan Hill as Morgan Hill, someone who's lived here alone on time. And, uh, I can tell by your answers, you do care, and thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Uh, Gino?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a, a quick question for Jennifer, if I may. Um, you mentioned, uh, several policies were suspended because of state laws, and that affected the many decisions going forward. Um, I could take this in an email or offline, but could you, could you list those policies that I could look at and try and figure out where they affected us in our decision-making pro, um, processes? And, and I actually think that would be a, a good thing to get out there for, for people to understand why you made these decisions, even though we had policies, but the policies were suspended because of state law. So, i- if you could, um, maybe get that information somehow. You don't have to do it, uh, like, right now, off the top of your head.
Thank you.
No, let's see if you can do it.
Well, and I will work through, Christina, well, I'll need the assistance of our legal team, but there'll be a fairly long list, I suspect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just real quickly, I think that in, uh, Marilyn, your comments about the frustration, I think what we're all experiencing as elected officials, and I'm sure staff is hearing it too, as we're talking with community members who are very frustrated in the things that they see, again, don't not, not understanding what state law is doing to us, but they're voicing to us their concern and their frustration. Uh, when you were working on the, on the general plan, those state laws had not really been implemented then, and so every, every community's dealing with it, and it's very, very frustrating. And so, I think when you hear that from us, we're just sort of echoing the words of our constituents and helping you to understand kind of what we're hearing as well. So, Yvonne?
I just, I just want to also thank you, you know, and we, me and I have been able to work on the council, so we're a little more familiar with everything that's happening, and everybody's getting caught up, and I think that's great. But sometimes you have to be the big bad wolf. I realize that, and I appreciate and respect that. Sometimes we do. You know, we all play a role in, in, um, how we balance these things out. And I too appreciate your, um, being candid and, and sharing with us where you're at, and kind of the position you're in. We're all, we're all kind of, you know, up against the wall in one way or another. Um, but I have to say, I really want to commend our team. I was talking this morning in, at a 7:30 call before we got here, about, um, you know, different cities, and so cities saying that they, you know, Redwood got, uh, Redwood City got their RENA approved, and, uh, I forget who the other one was telling me that they got their RENA, I think it's Chino Hills. And I'm like, hey, you know, we're right there. So, and there are very few, very few. And I hope that people understand how few people have actually hit those numbers, and you guys were able to do it with what you had on the table, without upzoning, without, you know, I mean, that's, it's pretty, it's pretty commendable, and I hope that people realize that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Okay, with that, then we'll move on to the housing and homelessness, and Rebecca Garcia. I don't know if you want to do an introduction, please?
Good afternoon, council, community, and teammates. I am going to quickly go through this and continue this conversation on housing. Um, our city's guided, of course, by our general plan. Our primary goal is really to improve, preserve, and develop new safe, quality rental and ownership housing for residents at all income levels, both existing residents and also newcomers. Um, a lot about our program is really grounded in five pillars. So when we talk about the housing element and the abundance of actions and implementation items and policies, it can really be solidified into five things for the most part. The production of new affordable housing units, the promotion of housing programs, really communicating to our community about what we have and how they can access our different programs, preservation of our existing affordable housing inventory. We have a significant below-market-rate program, and we work really hard with our nonprofit developers to try to help them raise rehabilitation dollars to keep up the properties that they currently have, prevention of homelessness, and then, of course, the protection of quality of life for new and existing neighborhoods. Um, the housing need is very real. I know we talk about this at a very high level, state housing crisis. We've all heard that a million times, and it's incredibly well documented. But I want to talk just real quickly about what the need here is locally in Morgan Hill, to put it into perspective. Um, so extremely low-income housing households, we have about, we have more than 2,000 of those types of households earning that type of extremely low income in our community, and we have only 130 extremely-low-income housing units. I'm not picking on Morgan Hill. That's very common for jurisdictions. We're way, 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 way behind on producing the production of extremely-low-income units everywhere. Um, we have over 1,700 very-low-income households and nearly 700 very-low-income units. Same thing for low-income, 1,700 households and only 370 low-income units, and then 1,300 that are right above the low-income category, and only 560 of those moderate units to match that. And then, we have over, we have about 7,800 moderate to above-moderate income households, and yet we have more than 12,000 of those types of housing units. So, the need is great here locally, and what that really means is, the people who are living in housing are paying way more than they can really afford to pay, which does very much impact their quality of life. Our portfolio here in Morgan Hill, just some quick key facts. We are nearly 80% single-family housing. This is problematic for people who cannot afford to pay for homes that are a million dollars. You know, 70% of the homes sold in Silicon Valley over the past couple of years have been over a million dollars. We continue to grow at a 2% annual growth. As Jennifer mentioned, I believe we have more than 1,800 housing units in our development pipeline today. Uh, I don't have to tell you, but I will. Housing costs have skyrocketed in recent years. Our median home sales price is about, has went from 472,000 in 2001 to over 1.3 million in 2023, and our average rent is over $3,000. What that means is, you have to work about three minimum-wage jobs in, I don't know, 150 hours a week to try to pull that off, um, or you're, you're living in a home with multiple families. Our program is essentially guided by three, uh, big policies. Of course, the housing element, which is the chapter of our general plan. That's really our work program with policies, action items. We share that responsibility with Jen and the planning team. We also have our local program, our home base, which is our inclusionary housing ordinance. And then we also have the Santa Clara County Community Plan to End Homelessness, which the council adopted a few years back. A little bit on RENA numbers, you've heard about these a lot. For our fifth cycle, which covered 2015 to 2022, uh, we essentially achieved that total number that we were assigned. We were assigned at 928 housing units. Uh, we permitted 3,142, and we essentially exceeded every single income category that we were assigned. Now, for the sixth cycle, which is the next eight years, 2023 to 2031, we have a goal of 1,037 units as the baseline that we've been assigned. Affirmatively Further Fair Housing, this was effective January 1st, 2019 through Assembly Bill 686. Essentially, affirmatively furthering fair housing is about combating, um, housing discrimination. The original affirmatively furthering fair housing law really goes back to, I'm forgetting the year, but I think, I believe, the 1960s. And then the state of California adopted it, and now it's also part of our housing element, where we actually have to do a real intentional analysis of how we're doing with our equity glasses, and taking a look at our own zoning practices, and identifying anything that could be, um, a barrier to accessing housing opportunities. So our housing programs are really bucketed into about four categories. Again, our inclusionary housing ordinance, which basically tells developers, if you're going to build residential in Morgan Hill, at, at a minimum, 15% of it is going to be, uh, affordable. And if it's downtown, 10%. As a result of that program, which is really about a 40-year-old program, we have a hefty below-market-rate portfolio with nearly 600 ownership units, 23 rental units, and we have some old down payment begin money that is attached to below-market-rate homes. We have our homeless program, which I'll talk about again in a little bit, and then a lot of what we do is also partnerships and resource coordination. So, we work with the county. We have a joint powers agreement. The county implements our community development block grant program, and, and they use our population, and we partner with them, and that funds a whole bunch of service providers, including home repair, community solutions, domestic violence agencies. And then community engagement is a big piece of our work, and we've certainly elevated that with Michelle's team and with Edith's guidance over the past year. I will pause there and say that I'm going to continue to talk about homelessness, but I'm happy to take any questions on, on housing in general or affordability, or I'm happy to keep going as well.
Any questions? Gino?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Rebecca. Um, I, I, I was so proud of the accomplishments in the homeless area that Morgan Hill is doing, and I took some of this information just recently, um, put it on Nextdoor, uh, just a homeless thing. And, um, and I, I really thought I was going to get some great comments, uh, coming back from the community saying, wow, I didn't realize that you guys were doing all these great things for our community and homeless. Um, uh, and there was very little compliments. It was, some of the compliments was, um, and I was surprised, very emphatically, you're not, you're not doing a good job, um, because we, we see homelessness in Morgan Hill. Well, we see homelessness everywhere in California. But, um, he, uh, he specifically said, "The encampment is not a homeless issue." And I, I, right above that was some of the information that you put, addressing, uh, the encampments and what we're doing. And in the encampment, encampments, there are obviously unhoused individuals. So, um, uh, what, what would you suggest that, um, and you, I could take this offline. Uh, I can go back and, and reply to this person, um, because I, I was waiting for today
Yeah.
to, to do this. But, but again, I'm, I'm really proud of, uh, a lot of your accomplishments, and your coordination with the police department. And, uh, Brian, I, I have a hard time saying his last name, McElhan? And I have some personal, um, uh, relation with him because of, uh, an individual in my district who had an issue with the homeless, and I connected them up. And I saw the really good work between P D and Brian, and the services that was brought to these individuals. And so, anyway, if you could, uh, if you can help me a little bit more respond to these individuals
Yeah.
that no matter what we're trying to do in Morgan Hill, um, they're, they're not satisfied. And, and I could tell you, I'm also, uh, I know, because I'm on a call, weekly call on a Sunday, from a group called CALI, California Association of Local Electeds. Uh, every Sunday, almost every Sunday, we meet. Um, and, uh, we're one of the only cities, a few cities, that has a person like Brian in, in our, uh, in our town.
Correct.
And we got a grant to help pay for this. So, that's why I said, we're doing some fabulous things, but, um, I'm trying to get the word out, uh, to the community, and anything that you could do to help me out would be appreciated. So, thank you very much.
Happy to.
Excellent. Thank you. Marilyn, please.
Yeah, hi. Um, am I on? Yes. Anyway, um, thank you, Rebecca. Um, we all, I'm sure, as council members, got an email about vacancies in different, um, housing projects around town. And, uh, one of the first ones was a one-bedroom, and I think it was either 1,600 or 1,900 a month. I almost fell off my chair. I, I was like, I thought these places that had low income, very low, I thought they'd be like $500 a month. I mean...
That would be acutely extremely low income.
I want, I mean, these prices on all of these just really shocked me.
Yeah.
And how do we lower these prices for these people? I mean, are there grants? Are there subsidy of other, you know, from the county? I mean, because if you're a very, very low-income person, how in the world can you afford that? I mean, I know you can't afford 3,000 a month, but how can you even afford 1,600 a month?
Yeah, it's a real challenge, and a lot of them aren't affording it, and sleeping in their cars for the first time, and I've seen seniors sleeping in their cars for the first time. So, um, what I try to say is, it's affordable for someone, but it isn't affordable for the acutely low or the extremely low, which is why one of our goals in our housing element is really to push extremely-low-income housing. So with any funds that we have available, we're really trying to partner with nonprofit developers to produce as much extremely-low-income housing. We've never met that goal in the history. No city has until this fifth cycle. So we have a lot of making up to do. Um, I get excited about it and want to pat ourselves on the back, but at the same time, we're way, way, way behind in that particular category.
So how, how are, are there any means to subs, to subsidize those rents?
There are, but not enough. So the housing authority gets federal money to subsidize. County Measure A dollars subsidize. Um, R dollars will subsidize, um, but there certainly isn't nowhere near to the scale at which it's needed.
I'm, I understand. So, those funds come to us, like, we have this little pot of money
Mm-hmm.
that we can help for some of these people. Okay.
Housing in Lufy is pretty much all we have.
Okay, thank you. I truly, really, I really almost
Yeah.
I was like, what? I was so shocked.
When you think about affordable housing, the majority of it, just remember, is workforce housing. So even when we talk about extremely-low-income units, it's workforce housing. As you, as I hear the words tourism, healthcare, retail, if you look at any salary schedule for any city, any county, any employer, anybody setting aside the technology industry, you're looking at affordable housing incomes all day long. And a small number of people who are in the above-moderate, moderate category, everywhere. So it's this misconception that, oh, that's for them. It's like, no, no, no. It's actually, the majority of folks fall within a, at least in this county, because the area median income is so high, because the technology industry pays so much higher that it, it throws it off.
Well, I tell you, it was a real eye-opener, and, um, and so were these numbers. So thank you for all you're doing, and
You're welcome.
you know, how can we support it and
Fantastic little team.
make it even more better for you, so, and these folks. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Renee, did you have?
The, well, kind of related, the, and I see the challenge, and by the way, thank you for all you do. Uh, it's so critical, and especially also for our unhoused ones. And I, and I do think we need to, to be, become even more creative in looking, you know, can we leverage some of our motels, or is there a way of, of having, you know, those, those small-unit houses temporary to, for unhoused, uh, people, right? You know, when you, when you think of the cold winter we had, how cruel that was for
Yeah.
for, for our unhoused population in the area. Uh, I don't have the answer either. I know it's a challenging, a challenge for every community or region, but I, I think we, we need to make sure that we don't forget about the weakest ones.
Mm-hmm.
But without offering a solution, right, we're all talk, right? And, and including myself, uh, I can say, go do, but if, if we can't put them anywhere, what do we do, right? And what, what we often call, it's affordable or even low income, Marilyn, you heard me say that over and over again, Rebecca's heard it. Most people I know, uh, still cannot afford it.
Really?
And the other thing, you know, that we need to find a better way is, how can we help downsize people that want to, right? So that they give up their bigger homes for the families, the, the, the double-wage earners that can't afford it, right? But they, but they have nowhere to go, those, those people, right?
Right.
Because they, they end up paying more property tax. They, the, the new house, the new house, even though maybe just half the size, might be a triple the amount of what they paid. So, uh, doesn't, so then, of course, they, they stick to their huge homes, and can't blame them, right? They have nowhere to go. And I don't think we have an answer either, yet, as a community, right? How do we help with downsizing, right? And then...
No, not yet.
And those are not necessarily people that cannot afford it, right? They, they probably can, uh, afford, uh, a certain amount of a house price, right? I'm not talking about low income now. And, and I don't know if, if we have thought about that, or if we need a workshop one day to kind of brainstorm a little bit. I don't know your thoughts on that.
I think the issue of housing and affordability is the biggest task before... I think the issue of housing and affordability is the biggest task before the state and before any city. And all the legislation, for as painful as some of it may be, it's going to increase production, which the hope is that it decreases the cost that's the whole supply and demand. That's at the root of the legislation, even though it is admittedly not all perfect. So we'll see how it turns out over the next couple of years. I mean, things like accessory dwelling units, we're definitely seeing a lot more of those. So the hope is that parents will maybe move into the accessory dwelling unit and maybe the kids with the family will take the larger home. So I think you need every single tool in the toolkit.
And I know the attention the state had is increased productivity, but everything or most of what we're building right now is at a price of quarter million more than I paid when I moved to Morgan Hill for our home, right? And I was able to afford it. So how in the heck is someone else, obviously plenty of people can afford it, but it's not affordable. It's not housing for people with regular incomes, right?
If I may, I think that what I can contribute for us, as we look ahead, who do we want to be when we grow up sort of thing? As a community, when we look at the kind of housing that we're building, you know, the size of those homes, the size of the lots, all of that is going to kind of circle back to, well, how much land do we have? How do we support those families? The numbers that Rebecca shared with you shows over 5,000 families today in Morgan Hill that require some sort of affordability, right? Over 2,000 families that have extremely low income, which is for a family of four is about $50,000 that a family of four would make. We have over 2,000 of those families here in Morgan Hill. And we only have 130 extremely low income units. So again, just kind of to circle back, this is not a solution that we can solve for right now, but it's part of the solution is again, the production of certain, a wide range of housing. And as Rebecca mentioned, you know, the state is moving forward to ease the production of ADUs so that, say, for example, you might not be able to buy your own home, but you might be able to have your aging parents or your children come back and live with you in the back of your house. I know that this conversation gets folded in with our unhoused conversation. And if you would like, Mr. Mayor, we can move forward with that piece and then finish, continue.
Yes, I have a couple of comments to make, though. Especially with regards to the downsizing opportunity. I think there was a bill a couple of years ago in the State Assembly that was introduced about, if I'm not mistaken, reducing those costs, I think for property taxes, that if somebody were to move into a different sized home or something like that, that somehow got defeated or vetoed. And that's where I think we have to take that fight is even working with some of these, whether SCORE or some other agencies, and get that reintroduced at the state level. Because you're right, people are staying where they're at because they're not going to downsize and pay three times the property. It just doesn't work. So the other thing I think we talk about, and it's interesting because we do talk about extremely low, we can talk about however low you want to go, but at some point, it's a conversation around free housing. Because someone who can't afford anything will always remain in their car or in a tent. And as difficult as that conversation has to become, what does that even look like? Not that we're going to solve that here today. I'm just saying, the cost to build a home is so outrageous. We've got builders in our industry here that can tell you just the bare minimum costs for material, not to mention the regulation costs, the other costs that go along with it. Yeah, so it's not about, it's not about creating affordable housing. We have to either subsidize it to the point where it's free or do something completely different.
Yeah, one way that I, I'll just make the quick comment that, you know, it is a very big, strong movement to see housing built. And it's really fueled by a lot of younger folks who can't, who are middle income and can't afford it the way my parents did in the seventies, right? And it's an equity conversation that's tied to race and systems and policies and redlining. Just the other day, Edith and I were reading a policy in a title document here in Morgan Hill, actually in the neighborhood that she lives in, that literally said we cannot, we couldn't have lived there. People of certain descents, of certain race couldn't. And it was the first time I'd actually read that here locally. So it was, it took us both aback. Yes, that was, that was our reaction too.
No, I get it. But that's not the case today. The case today is housing is unaffordable.
It is unaffordable, yes.
It doesn't matter race. Or it's just not affordable. My kids left town. Now, I could move into Nadya, you know, I could do that, but I'm just saying, it's across the board. It is, it is just not affordable. And so I think that's, we're struggling with, how do we do this when costs are so outrageous? How do you create affordable housing?
It's kind of reminds me of the concept of education, totally different topic, but at one point, it wasn't accessible to everybody, right? Only certain people went to school. And then, and then community and society evolved to a place of this consciousness of, well, we should probably figure out a way to house everybody safely for lots of different reasons, wherever you're at on the spectrum of compassion or caring or it just, people evolve as a society. And I believe we will get to a point where everyone is housed. It might take another 10 or 20 years, but.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you, I do. Yvonne, we'll get to you. And then, of course, if we want to, again, try to keep on track here and.
The first thing I want to say is thank you for those numbers that you showed. And I hope that we can share that with the community because it sends a really good message. If you just look at that, and I was just adding it up, half of our constituency is below. Half of our constituency of every, so one out of every two people that I represent. I think that's important for all of us to remember, right? And then also looking at the issue of farmworker housing, and I know we've got some new legislation coming through that, and that's something that we could definitely, I hope that we see more of here, goes back to some of the other social ills that we see with people doubling up in homes, you know, danger to children, but also mental health. And there was the huge shooting that I think kind of showed us the stark reality of what's happening with farmworkers and ag workers and low poverty housing. And what that can drive people to, right? I mean, so this is a social problem that we have to address. And I think you just spoke to it, that we're getting there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point, Yvonne. Thank you. Okay, so on to the rest of the, yeah, there you go.
I'll go through quickly. Our housing element goals, we really have seven, provide a diversified housing stock. Again, ELI all day long is necessary, advancing equity and inclusion, preserving and rehabilitating, promoting housing for people who are currently homeless, housing for groups with special needs, and continuing to increase our community outreach. The community plan to end homelessness is really this high level plan that Destination Home in the County with certain stakeholders put together. The two cities that participated were Morgan Hill, myself, and my counterpart Wayne in Mountain View. And these are the three high level things that we asked every city council to adopt in every city. Address the root cause through homeless, through, address the root causes of homelessness through system and policy change, which I believe the city has done a really good job of. Expand homeless prevention and then improve the quality of life for unsheltered individuals and creating healthy neighborhoods for all. And I will tell you, Wayne and I fought very hard for that, and create healthy neighborhoods for all. And I believe it's because we both worked for cities and we were trying to balance the conversation of why it's important to continue to evaluate everything that we do. Who experiences homelessness? At this point in time, it could be absolutely anybody. Solutions, we've touched on this a little bit, a very coordinated approach with the county of Santa Clara and many stakeholders. We work with a lot of CBOs from Cecilia's Closet to St. Vincent de Paul. The second one, an intake process, this is really, really important. Every unhoused individual that we come into contact with gets assessed. This is through the county's coordinated system. Essentially, they get interviewed and asked a bunch of personal questions about, are you a veteran? How old are you? How long have you been homeless? Trauma? That gives them a score. It puts them into the county's database, and that is how they get matched with housing. So Brian's job is not only to go out and survey and assess and build relationships and trust, which takes time, but it's also to make sure that they get assessed and into that system. So he has the good fortune of also going back to find that individual and knowing where to find them when their number does get called. And that's our favorite part. Permanent supportive housing, that's the type of housing that is required for folks who have high service needs, chronically homeless folks. And then, of course, we have a crisis response system that continues to evolve, a partnership with our police department. We have a psychiatric emergency response teammate who's housed in PD and goes out with Detective Zen and really does crisis de-escalation work. We've talked about Brian's role. This was a grant that we received. It's a three-year grant. And this is a game changer for any city because what you're doing is essentially synthesizing so many different resources from the county to the CBOs, braiding them all together, and then one-on-one, working with every family to figure out exactly what their unique need is. We have our Incliment Cold Weather Shelter that currently has been operating more than it ever has. Emergency response, we've assisted folks, for example, the most recent was flooding. Homeless prevention, we do put some money towards rental assistance and work very closely with the school district. And then to touch a little bit on encampments, we do have a coordinated approach. Each department has their own unique distinct responsibility. Housing, of course, is connection to services, offering shelter. Public services, Chris's team is abatement of city property, streets, sideways, rightways, city facilities. And then code compliance is the team that really contacts the private property owner and coordinates with various public agencies, whether it's the railroad or Caltrans or whoever owns that particular land. And then, of course, police department does abatement of cars and RVs and other safety and public nuisance. So we all work very closely together, but each have a very different hat that we wear. Our process, Brian receives the referral, he makes contact, building relationship and assessing them. That's social work. Brian has a master's in social work, and that's really a very special skill that not all cities possess. And I can tell you, I can tell when a city is coordinated on this work and I can tell when they're not. And you make really big strides when you are coordinated. Some great successes we've had since he joined us in December of '21, he's processed 260 referrals. He's catching these referrals from all over the place, from you, from PD, from residents, you name it. He's housed 27 people. And remember, these folks are extremely low income. They're not always housed in Morgan Hill. Sometimes they go to other cities. 71 have been connected to shelters and 22 connected to legal services. So lots and lots of coordination with our local service providers. We are seeing our homeless numbers decline. In 2017 was the year that we were really concerned because we saw a very big jump that was consistent with Gilroy's very big jump. So that was the moment where we started making a greater investment in our homeless response system and evolving. The most recent count was 60 people in 2022. Just to give you one more different data point, Morgan Hill Unified School District, they count their own homeless population. They have 737 students experiencing homelessness. They also use a much broader definition. So they're looking at folks who are living in garages, RVs, shared housing. So their definition is different and larger. And they have 155 students living in RVs. Some achievements, we've already talked about our unhoused specialists, connecting folks to housing. Because we do that very coordinated assessment work with the county, we've had nearly 700 people housed since 2017. 51 folks assisted with homeless prevention. We've done our inclusionary housing ordinance. We have built 153 new extremely low and very low income units, 10 beds operating at our cold weather shelter during Incliment periods, and 554 affordable rental units in the pipeline. The end.
Nicely done. Okay.
This is a beginning.
Yvonne.
Yay, Brian. Yay, Brian.
Good job.
And then looking at the numbers for the students, 700 out of how many students is that roughly, do you know?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
Okay.
Over 8,000 students.
Over 8,000. Wow, okay. And then just wondering how it sounds like from the changes we had, the recent changes, we've had the county grant, we've got Brian, we've got the social worker working with PD. Do you think that another resource like that would help us get our numbers further down? Or do you think it's really just about getting the homes at this point?
I mean, another resource would always be helpful. I think we're okay right now and we're managing. And I would love to be able to respond to that a little bit later. I think in everything we do on the topic of homelessness has to be measured. So when you're a big city, you're taking big swings with big programs and big shelters and you got big money, right? But because we're so small, everything we do needs to be balanced and measured so that we don't overwhelm our team, not just my department, but also other departments.
Right. It would just be helpful whenever you're able to do that, you know, what is the next kind of ask for our size and what might help us get a little bit further. Thank you. Excellent work.
Thank you, Yvonne. Marilyn.
I have two things. One, you say that you do an intake, you know, their age and all of that stuff. Do you have people refuse to disclose stuff?
Sometimes, not often. And that's why it's so important for Brian to be the consistent friendly face that is not related to any kind of enforcement, but just, hey, here's a cup of coffee, water. The answer sometimes initially is no. But what I'm learning a ton from him is he doesn't give up and he continues to go back. And he has even made some incredible progress with an individual experiencing schizophrenia that I've never been able to reach or really like, and he just doesn't give up. And they realize he's not threatening. And so he makes significant progress.
That's good news. And having, and one of our members of our audience is Chair of CLEF, which is Community Law Enforcement Foundation, and I've been involved with that for years too. And we've heard from the police officers that report each month to us that there are people that just don't want to be housed. And what do we do about that? I mean, because we don't want them unhoused because we're worried about them. And, you know, I, I'm sure you've come across that because the police report it to us.
We do, but it's a smaller number that doesn't want to be housed. There are some, but that's the smaller number. And frankly, it depends on who asks them. So you're going to get a very different response from an unhoused social worker with a mental health lens. That's a very different engagement than it is with someone who may not have had a positive experience in the past with law enforcement. They have different experiences and traumas. So it very much depends on who's asking the question.
Right, yeah. Because the PD says they can't really do anything. They can't even move them along or anything like that. They just try to make contact with them to, you know, give them support services if they want them. And I know Brian's now following up and doing that, and they have a social worker too. But it worries me about people that don't want to live in a house or apartment or anywhere. They like living outside. So we do have some like that. And I guess just continually to work with them is the answer. Yes, thank you.
Renee?
Thank you, Rebecca, for the update. So I'm trying to kind of connect numbers. So in 2022, we had 60 known per survey. But then according to Brian, he processed 265 referrals.
So he's also processing homeless prevention numbers. People who are currently housed are calling him and saying, I'm about to be evicted or I'm about to be homeless. So that's both housed and housing insecure, I'll call it.
Got it. Thank you. Because that's a much higher number, right? Probably a realistic number.
Yeah.
Still on the low side, I would think. So I just noticed yesterday, when I was driving home from my day job, driving down Monterey, obviously Union Pacific or San Jose removed a lot of the housing camps along the way. I mean, those people don't just disappear. Did they take bus 68 and come down in our area? Where did they go?
You know, I have found that sometimes when big encampments get swept in San Jose, folks will come down here, but they won't stay here. Generally, they like to go where they're comfortable and it's their community and they know this church meal programs. And I always hear, you know, is Morgan Hill dropping people off over in Gilroy or vice versa? It's like, no, we don't own people. They go where they want to go, you know? And even if we did, they would come back. So, I mean, if the migration returns to where they're most comfortable.
And, you know, I probably well know, Mike and I, we often go for walks anywhere in the city, my district, and Gino's often. And if you open your eyes, you see the unhoused, right? And you see them on rainy days, on cold days. And I really wonder, are we, are those the ones we have reached and just haven't found a solution? Or are those in the category that they just, that's their lifestyle?
The most of them want housing, but they don't always want a shelter bed. So they want to stay where they're at until housing is available. And there is no housing for them until we build, until we build it. That is the majority of the sentiment. There is a smaller percentage that isn't interested in services for sure, but that is the smaller percentage.
But obviously, when it's cold like we've had and wet and, I mean, those are just living conditions, I can't even imagine how you can live like that. There has to be something, we have to do more than that. Even if they don't want to go in a shelter, we can't just look and leave them like that. I'm not saying remove them, I'm saying what's the best we can do to help them, right? To get through those cold and rainy days.
Brian does outreach on the creek in jackets and occasional blankets that. Brian does outreach on the creek and jackets and, and occasional blankets that get donated. We have found they don't want to leave their animals all the time, and they don't want to leave their stuff. They have a lot of stuff sometimes. I don't have a solution that will solve today. We definitely don't always get to the end result that we want, as fast as we want.
Right. And so the last question is, if, if, I don't know how many are really out there still as we speak today, right now, but there are, there are quite a few that I have personally seen. So if all of them wanted some sort of shelter, would that kind of, would we have the numbers of shelter?
I'm sorry?
All of those would say, yes, please, I'd like to have shelter. Would we be able to offer them shelter?
There is not enough shelter today. There, no, there's not enough shelter beds in the county. It's a two-week waiting list at a minimum.
Yeah, thank you. Let's, let's not give up on them.
Thank you, Renee. Question I have is, you had, you've already spoken, right, Yvonne?
I just have a question.
I've got a question here that I want to ask, and then I think we're going to move on. You have not yet spoken?
No.
Gino, okay, so we'll go to Gino next. You had mentioned there are, and I forgot the number of students who are with family, I would assume, living in RVs. Are those RVs just out on the street somewhere? Are they in RV parks?
RV parks.
Okay. So at least they're a better, safer environment. Okay, very good. Thank you. Gino?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just talking on the individual I was telling you about before, which was on Watsonville in Monterey. When, when I connected Brian up to this individual, it took Brian three tries to get him to another space and help. So it's just not on the first try, Brian. He goes out and establishes a trust relationship with these individuals. The same thing, there was an individual that I got Brian involved with on, at the exit of 101 and 10, same situation. I think it took him at least two, two tries. So it's just not a one-time contact with Brian. He, he really has to work hard to get these people. And so, you know, if we got, I'm just saying, I think the number was about 60 individuals now, possibly in Morgan Hill. Think about three, three, three contacts it's going to take. That's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Anyway, that was my, my comment. It's, it's something that, again, we are doing great, and I think we really should tell the work of Brian and the work of our staff getting Brian in here through a grant.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, thank you.
If you would, just to the point quick, and we'll move on.
I just want to know with our shelter, the cold shelter, that doesn't function after, like, we have the warming shelters, and then we have the overnight shelters. The warming shelters cut off at a certain amount, and then everybody must leave? Do we offer them to go to the overnight shelter, and is there enough for that?
The, the only thing we have is the Community Christian Overnight Warming Location when it's an Incliment weather period. So that's 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and 10 beds maximum. It never fills up, though.
Okay. And so during the day, it goes till 7:00 PM, like elsewhere for the warming center during the day?
No, not necessarily. There is nothing open during the day, other than maybe the Bacardre Reception Center in Gilroy.
Can we look at that? All right, I'm done. Thanks.
Okay, it is time for public comment. Michelle?
Again, Kathy Chavez-Napoli, and Renee said I should name all the organizations I belong to. So I'm on the, on the board of the Morgan Hill Historical Society and been on it for like seven years, member of AAUW and the Chamber. But as a person who was born and raised in San Jose, I've seen the growth and the challenges of homelessness. And one of the things that hasn't been talked about, and maybe we need to use the word instead of they don't want help, is they're not capable of help because there's a lot of mental issue, mental health issues, where they don't see, where you see unsafe or unsanitary, they don't even see that because they're having issues with their mental health. The other is, what I didn't hear was with Councilmember Gino, that you might help them the first time, but that doesn't mean it's a permanent solution. It can be recurring. And as a member of the Affordable Housing Network for many years, and seeing what happened in San Jose, when we lost a lot of that affordable housing with, due to redevelopment and other issues, where we lost a lot of the SROs, the Single Family Residence Units, that one of the reasons you don't have the kind of homelessness that other cities have now is because you're not offering some of those services. So when you start offering some of those services that we say we need here, like mental health or housing or other social services, you're going to see an increase. It's not going to go away. You've been fortunate, just like San Jose was fortunate for a long, long time not to have to deal with these issues, but it still comes to roost. And long-term, it's just a long-term challenge that you continually have to address. So I'm glad that you're addressing it, and I'm really, really happy that you're all having thoughtful discussion about it, that you care about these people, whoever they are, because you never know. We could be one of those persons. You have a catastrophic illness, you have somebody in your family that has that. It's not as far away as you think. And when we think of, you know, our workforce here, how many of them can afford it? When I was born in San Jose many decades ago, there were only 90,000 people there. Now, there are over 2 million in Santa Clara County. So we're not talking about a problem that's going to go away. It's going to continue. So we really need to think about maybe single-family units on a permanent scale working, and I like what you talked about, regional problems, because that's really the only way these issues are going to be addressed. They're never going to be solved. They're always going to be there, but if we work together with all the organizations like the Affordable Housing Network, we can at least help people who need the help. And they've had, you know, they have innovations in San Jose with RV parks where you're safer, where, you know, you just have some of those containers in other cities where they create housing temporary, and then they move them in. So I do really appreciate that when you're talking about the goals, they're long-term goals, and you are addressing the really hard issues for those people who, obviously, they're not here. They don't have a voice. So thank you so much.
Good points. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Doug Muirhead, thank you for a very thoughtful discussion this afternoon. I would like to do lots of comments, you know, glass more than half-full, but that's just not my style. So two, two shorter comments, one on housing as wealth creation and destruction, and one on warming and cooling centers based on when our employees are already working. The comment about housing is, I, I lived in a house in San Jose, I owned a house in San Jose for 19 years. When the tech bubble burst, I ended up needing money, so I sold it and moved down here to live in an apartment. I made hundreds of thousands of dollars in profit from my homeownership. That's wealth creation. And the owner of my apartment has made hundreds of thousands of dollars in the 16 years that I've lived here, and that's wealth destruction. I don't think we necessarily, you know, mentioned to people that there's this, two sides of that coin. And when the, the housing people begin to try and implement the many actions in their housing element, I'll probably be making that comment again. The second thing, and I brought it up with our emergency manager, with, and our local community librarian, is, yes, we have cooling centers at the library and at the CRC and city facilities, and that's fine, except that we had a heat wave last year, and it fell on a, a city and county holiday. The library was closed, although I understand they may have made an emergency opening of it later that I didn't hear about. But, and the CRC was the only city facility open, and it was closing at noon because it was the holiday. So I really would encourage you to kind of think, yes, we're doing things, and it looks good, but is it the right thing? Thank you. Really fine day, other than that it was a Friday rather than a Sunday.
Thank you, Doug.
Hi, Nick Geis again from the Chamber of Commerce. I have a couple of comments and maybe an offering. I first wanted to maybe kind of go back to economic development strategy. I wanted to thank Matt for his presentation. You know, I, I'm typically humbled every day on the amount of work that your team does, but more importantly, the depth and the expertise that you bring to the table. So thank you for that. I also wanted to, to offer, for your 2023 retail goals, they're very similar in alignment with the Chamber of Commerce, so we, we offer our services as far as discovery contributions, and more importantly, even execution in any one of these areas as well. We're going to have a heavy focus on retail strategy going forward, so we'd love to be a part of that, that dialogue. As for respect to the healthcare strategy, certainly from a very personal perspective, I'm just thrilled to see that we're advancing and moving forward with our healthcare strategy. What I would like to do maybe is to offer up that if we take a look at our very specific population health determinants and how that crosswalks to our, our current demographics or our census, we could take a look at some of the clinical subspecialties that may be more vital or important to our community. It would be something to take a look at as we look to attract either independent practices or larger facilities. So we're spending our money wisely, not only in recruitment, but obviously contributions back to our community. So that's a couple of comments and offerings there. I have to say that going back to the economic, this, this one chart with the bubbles, I really loved the visual because I think it just great, provided a great opportunity, not only for the narrative, but to take a look at the focused events that have been happening over the last several quarters. I just wanted to take a pause and a moment of reflection for the downtown area as relates to coming in fourth, with respect to the contribution of sales tax. 100 small businesses are representing a tremendous amount of work, and we want to continue to encourage not only downtown businesses, but our greater community. But it's not insignificant on where we stand as it relates to downtown and the sales tax contributions that we have. I'd also offer that we could take another lens at this, and if we take a look at density or the per acre square foot of, with these bubbles, that some of these priorities and rankings may adjust based on the contributions per acre foot of what each one of these areas are really contributing right now in sales tax. But this is a great way to be able not only visualize the opportunities, but to focus some very specific target areas on where you want to go in the near future. I guess the last comment, I just wanted to recognize and thank both Jennifer and Rebecca, not only for their time and efforts for this past year, but really for this past several years. Just to let you know, we're not lost at the Chamber of Commerce as far as our leadership on the amount of energies and work that you spend. And it's real clear that for every initiative that are brought, is brought to the council, it's typically led with compassion and empathy as a part of your observations, your recommendations, and then your inputs. I wanted to thank both of you and your teams for that. And again, thank you for, for a great day here as far as the two-day effort for the workshop.
Thank you, Nick. Anyone else? If there are no other comments, I do want to ask a question of the council. We've just gotten an update on the, on these strategic priorities, and I think what we probably need to direct staff toward is, is this the direction we want to continue to go? Do these, are these the kind of things, these were, these were brought forward, these were, this was an update, and is this the kind of thing we want to continue to work, move forward and, and focus on? I think it's important for the staff to know so they're not doing something we would, you know, direct them otherwise.
Where did we get this?
This, this is the document. This is, this was actually formulated, I think, prior to the pandemic.
But I mean, is it, we got it by email?
I think she's asking, what are you referring to?
Just these, these strategic priorities that we just received updates on today.
Oh, oh.
And again, I'm not looking for a formal vote. It's more of, hey, are we headed in the right direction? Do you feel comfortable with continuing with these strategic priorities? And if not, then we can have a, a bigger discussion at, at the next council meeting on that. But I'd be looking for your thoughts.
I'm comfortable with, yeah, I think we talked about some very important things today. I mean.
Okay. Renee?
Yeah, I agree. I think I mentioned it in our first day already when we went over it. I, I think we need to do more with the cost of advocacy in various levels, on state level. I'd like to see also more regional collaboration in many of the, the challenges we're facing.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, the strategic priorities are what they are strategic, not just for six months. They are three to five years, right? And we shouldn't change them every few months, or that would drive our staff probably nuts.
Right, right.
And our city manager.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Renee. Anyone else? Yvonne?
Yeah, I'll just say that I, I thank you all for a great day. I think this was really good for the council, for, for everybody's staff. Thank you. I wanted to comment on the economic development. Matt, I really want to thank you for your work, and you've come on board.
Yvonne, if I could, real quick, forgive me.
Okay.
But my question is, simply, it's not about staff at this point?
No, but I'm going to talk about what I'd like for.
Okay, then.
As part of the strategic priority.
Let's keep the conversation here. We're not going to direct questions or comments to staff at this point.
Okay. So I would like to see with economic development, and I know we're still working on it, but that we include in that broadband and PG&E.
Yes, yes. And we will be seeing PG&E in the next 30 to 60 days, coming before council.
But just that we continue, you know, we've had a lot of community.
Right.
Input on that.
Yes, indeed.
So we want to make sure we keep that.
Very good. Yeah, that makes good sense. Thank you, Yvonne.
And may I just a clarifying question?